Good.
I didn't pull this.
Call this special meeting to order at 5:01.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Here.
Councilmember Capaldi, here.
Councilmember Hull.
Here.
Councilmember Darwin.
Present.
Councilmember Mars.
Here.
Vice President Brown.
Yeah.
President Verducci.
Here. I'd like to ask District One to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. All right, for those of you in attendance, the emergency evacuation plan is to go that way if you can, and if not, go this way out to the doors marked and back to the side area. Thank you for joining us on the special meeting tonight. Town Council Weekend Look Ahead Edition. We are here to discuss a few different items. We've got some staff presentations as well, but we will start off with public comment on docketed items. Oh, we've got. Okay. Public comment in the room, anyone here would like to come up on docketed items? Please step forward. State your name and address for the record.
Cheryl Kane, 185 Reed School Host Road. The reason why I'm here tonight is I know that you are going to be discussing the guidelines for different things when it comes to zoning, and I understand that it might be for the customary home occupation. I believe that Mr. McLean has been misled on how this guidance for this customary home occupation is supposed to be. I have talked into other people from Kathy LaPorte, that was a prior zoning official, when this customary home occupation was first established. And she told me the intent and the purpose was definitely for these kind of properties, landscaping properties, property management, and all the such trees in residential areas are not allowed. I also just spoke with, last weekend, I was at a bazaar, and I bumped into Denise DeGrade. Denise DeGrade was on the zoning board, just recently resigned back in probably 2022. I did not tell her I thought about the customer home occupation. I just said, well, since you were on the zoning board, you must know about the customary home occupation. And she proceeded to tell me exactly what I've been telling you all along. This customary home occupation was for businesses in residential areas. So these businesses that are going, that are out throughout Coventry that have kind of either landscaping, tree business, salvage items, junk items, anything in that type of business is not allowed in residential areas, period. So from this, what we need to do now is we need to have the zoning enforcer or whoever from that department to send letters to all these people, and they have to rent storage areas for their equipment, for their businesses, because they are not allowed in residential areas. I have talked to many people, they are intimidated. That's why I'm here. I'm here on behalf of Coventry residents that will not be intimidated by these type of people that think that they can bully you around so they can have their businesses in their homes. I don't care if it's in his home, he can have his office in his home, but when it comes to all his equipment, they all have to be off site. He has to rent some other kind of a storage area. I talked to Mr. Bain down the street, which he had a business just like Mr. Kyle, Mr. Clodius. And he, as you know, I gave you certified copy, notarized copy from him, that he was made to remove his business from his residential area and to rent or buy or whatever, some kind of storage area for his business. We also had another problem up the street at St. Rebecca's property, there was a salvaged yard there. The town of Coventry many years ago shut that down also. The businesses that we have throughout Coventry that you cannot see from property lines, those are the type of businesses that are customary home occupations. You can't see them from the property lines that aren't making noises, that aren't making smoke, all the above. I mean, when you read this customary home occupation, it is definitely made. Common sense, read this, have common sense, and you'll know exactly what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in chambers, docketed items? All right, heading over to Zoom, do we have any hands, Mr. Marcus? Okay. No hands on there, and Vice President Brown.
Yes, good evening. Mr. President, I'd like to take the agenda out of order. I'd like to move Agenda Item 4, Letter B, Resolution 2025-121. I'd like to bring that up first.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second, Councilman Pasqua. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We will take the agenda out of order, and did you want to?
Yeah, Chief Poppen's here, so maybe just come up and give an overview, Chief, because there's some new members on the council from the last time you presented. And we'll go from there.
Excellent, thank you. Good evening, appreciate you taking this item out of order. We stand before you on behalf of the four Coventry Fire Districts where we request $282,345.01 for the purchase of new LifePak 35 cardiac monitor defibrillators using opioid funds. So currently, right now, all four districts are using outdated technology that is nearing the end of its life, and the opioid funds are strictly used for addressing the opioid epidemic that every city and town across the country and across the world face. And this funding and this equipment will directly affect the lives of all residents, but especially those that are suffering from opioid addiction. So this, this equipment helps to rescue them and resuscitate them if they're overdosed and they're unresponsive and in cardiac arrest, but it is also used to monitor them if their respiratory system is depressed, which is one of the main reasons of death in an opioid overdose. Certainly have any, be able to take any questions if anybody has any.
All right, let's do a quick, just an update from the town manager on the fund side of things. If you could just explain where the opioids are at, those funds.
After this purchase, there'll be $114,000 left.
So just for you guys, that's a part of money that we got, that's where you got settlement funds. So we're using them here, this is a proper use, and Councilman Pasqua.
Chief, could you just touch base on streamlining this type of equipment throughout the four districts? Because the districts currently use different types of equipment, they don't really match up. So if you could just talk about ZOL versus Physio and how this all?
Absolutely, so streamlining our equipment is certainly a benefit to all of the districts. So as you said, Councilman, right now, the four districts don't use the same equipment. So especially in a cardiac arrest, it makes it very cumbersome if there's personnel that are operating, you know, let's say from the Anthony District that is operating the Hopkins Hill Monitor. So this will allow us to streamline and also be able to share consumables. So if, you know, a set of defibrillator pads, for example, happens to be used, we can, you know, we'll have a commonality across the districts. So it'll improve our efficiency, especially in those patients that are, you know, in time-dependent crisis.
Thank you very much, and just also for the council's awareness, you can look at Section 10 of the resolution. We do address just kind of the ownership and travel of the equipment. This is some pretty expensive stuff, so, you know, just in the event, any confusion about districts versus the town, there's some language in there for you to review. Councilwoman Capaldi.
Mr. Perillo and I were having a conversation today about trying to be very mindful on legal documents that may not be written correctly or have misspellings. And I just want to go over a couple in this resolution so we can document it and then fix it before it goes into wherever it needs to go. So on lines 11 through 13, starts whereas each of the four fire districts, the word "fire" hyphen "perform" is not a word, that's not a word. So it's "fire," and then it's "perform," "life," hyphen, there's a hyphen missing there, "saving," "measures." So did we get that? There's no hyphen, who wrote it? I'm just telling you the mistake, correcting the mistake so we can fix it. And then, you know, it'll be good to go. So what's?
Whereas each of the four fire districts.
Line 12, "fire" hyphen "perform" is not a word.
So then I listed the four fire districts, then I put "perform life-saving measures."
It says, "Coventry, Anthony, fire, hyphen, perform." That's not a word, so get rid of the hyphen. If it's this next sentence, let's make it a complete sentence, and "life-saving" has to have a hyphen between "life" and "saving," that is the word. If we go down to, oh, yeah, we said missing, so line 12 to 13 is "life, hyphen, saving." And then it's incorrect grammar on line 15 through 16, where it says, "whereas in cases involving opioid overdoses, there is a significant increased risk of cardiac arrest." A significant increased risk is grammatically incorrect. The way to fix it is it's a significant increased risk. You can't have an adjective modify another adjective. I'm the grammar guru, so I want these, these are legal documents, and this, they should be written correctly. Was that a laugh? Okay. I think that is the last one on, let's see, lines 23 to 24. Okay, that's fine. Oh, no, lines 23 to 24. It ends with a period, and in a resolution, the way that we write resolutions, it's with the semicolon "and." And all of the other paragraphs have that except that, that, that one. It says "abatement, hyphen, related expenditures." It should be semicolon "and" to go to the next paragraph. In line 29 to 30, the sentence says, "district with parentheses S cease to exist." Grammatically correct would be "ceases to exist." And just out of curiosity, I don't know if this is done, I really would just like to know when this is formal, when this is done and it's ready and it's, you know, blessed into, you know, resolution law. Are the numbers taken off? The numbers of the, because it should, the numbers should not be there for a formal document that's formalized. If you have any questions, if I read that too fast, I'd be more than happy to send it to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Solicitor, do we do a technical correction?
Move to make the technical correction that's recommended by Councilwoman Capaldi.
Should I have motioned that? I'm sorry, because I know in the past, I know Hillary would go through with any.
I mean, you could do that, we're here now, I mean, we're doing it, we should just finalize it to make it formal.
Sure, I motion to make those changes into the Resolution 2025-121 per me, Councilwoman Elisa Capaldi. And if you need me to, you know, email those changes to you, I'd be more than happy to.
I'll second that.
Right, we have a motion in a second on the technical correction. Any discussion on the technical correction? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? Eyes have it, that motion carries, we're back on the resolution now, Councilman Hull.
Really quick, how long do these machines last?
So typically about 10 years is considered end of life. You know, obviously, you know, based on technology upgrades and things of that nature. But I would say for most medical equipment of this technology level, I would say about 10 to 12 years.
Nice, thank you. Mr. Perillo, do we have anything in the pipeline for the remaining 114,000 that we know of coming up?
They're going to use it at the annex. Once we open up the community center.
And, Councilman, just to clarify, so typically it's 10 years, but then usually you can use it past end of life, but what happens is they start to phase it out, so you'll not be able to cover it with a service contract. And then also the next phase will be, you won't be able to get parts. So basically, and then the consumables become too expensive, and so usually it's around 10 to 15 years, probably at the maximum. Good to know. And just as a side note, whoever spearheaded the ownership provision in the updated, kudos to that. Yeah, that's it, thank you, appreciate your time.
Vice President Brown.
I think it's fair to point out that the town does 7,200 fire and EMS calls. Of that total, 82% of them are EMS calls. And of that, the majority of them are ALS where this equipment will be used. That's on an annual basis, it's incredible. People don't realize how busy the fire districts are, and this equipment will be used multiple times a day.
As Councilman Brown said, pretty much every, every incident that's medical in nature, this, this equipment is used.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else on this? Councilman Darwin.
You had mentioned consumables, I'm assuming each fire department will be responsible for the consumables related to each one of these units?
Yes, and some of them are replaced by the hospital. So for example, the electrodes that you would use to acquire an EKG, they're typically replaced by the hospital, and then the defibrillator pads, the N title CO2 attachments and the things of that nature are just part of our regular budget.
And then with the purchase price, does that include training or will there be any additional things that are coming out to?
So that does include training, and it also includes a service contract.
Okay, thanks.
All right, anybody else? All right, I'll entertain a motion on the resolution.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-121 on the HOP monitors.
Second.
We have a second, Councilman Pasqua, any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries, thank you very much, Chief.
On behalf of all the five districts, thank you very much, happy Thanksgiving.
All right, back on the top of the agenda, we're on to item two. We are back to report of the town manager. We've got a couple issues relating to some moves on our upcoming audit. Take it away, Mr. Manager.
CLA is here on Zoom to answer any of your questions regarding to the unredacted invoices that you requested. It's Luke from CLA, if you can bring him in, Marcus. Here's Luke.
Hey, everybody, nice to meet you, Councilman and Councilwoman, thank you for your time today. I'm here, I'm a manager at CLA in our Forensics Litigation Investigations Practice. I know you guys had some questions regarding the forensic review, and I'm happy to answer all of them. I know I got a list of questions that you guys had sent over, if not all the questions that you guys sent over, so I'm happy to answer them in order here, or if you guys want to ask them, and I'm happy to answer them.
I would just say for efficiency, if you have the list of questions, if you want to read them and read us your answers, and then it'll might jog our minds for something else.
Yeah, definitely.
Good with that.
So the first question I received, and I don't know who submitted these questions, but the first one was under the full investigation, how would CLA get access to Angel's calendar? And continue of the question is, I think this would be a good way to check in on things, but I don't want to extend the effort, there's no chance of getting the information. And so the answer from CLA's side and my side is that gaining access to Angel's calendar would be through the town and their ability to pull the outlook or something similar, I don't know what program you guys use for calendar from his town account. If there's no town account, and I talked to Dan earlier today, it seems like he did have a town account, but he did not utilize his calendar in that, in that database. So without that, and if we can look at it, but without getting his personal access to his calendar, which would only be done through litigation, or if he submitted it voluntarily, we would not be able to get his calendar.
Thank you very much, we got a question over here, Councilwoman Capaldi.
And to that point, even if we, he did use a calendar that we had access to, I don't think it'd be a reliable source of any kind of evidence, because I would assume that, or it's easily editable, deletable, and all that stuff, and in the situation we are currently in, I wouldn't trust someone not to do that if they were being looked at. So I'm glad that we're not going to go in that path. I think the better path to go to confirm if he was at certain meetings or not would be to look at the video. And if he wasn't there, he wasn't there, and you can't, you know, then you could see if he charged for it. So I think that's the easiest way to go about it.
Thank you, Councilwoman, yeah, there was a couple other questions related to those topics, so when we go over those, I can address that as well.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I think my question that I posed at the last meeting was kind of all encompassing.
Yeah.
I think we should start with that, and then everything else kind of falls under that.
At the pleasure for Councilwoman Capaldi, can you give us an overview of kind of, you know, how your approach would differ from, say, a LA person, you know, going in and trying to match things up? You know, we know you have a specialty office there, so if you could just give us a little bit of info on how that's different from, you know, what, do you want a question within the question?
I want to clarify something, though. What I stated last meeting was that what we have as evidence is his invoices and his letter of intent. That's all we have, and I'm going to do that. I'm going to put the hours in and go back and forth, flipping through everything, and confirm what I can see. What are you going to do that's different? Because I would be doing it for nothing.
I, I think that that's an unfair statement, Councilwoman Capaldi, because I'm a real estate agent, and anyone sitting in the audience can go sell their house, but it doesn't mean that they can do it as good.
No, it's not unfair, that's my feeling, and I want to hear from CLA, what makes them different? What is their unique abilities to do something better than what any one of us up here can do? So it's not an unfair statement, it's my statement, what I believe in, and I want to hear what CLA has to say.
Yeah, happy to talk about that. So, you know, this is, this is the world we live in. I'm part of the Forensics Litigation Investigations Team here at CLA, which is, all we do is forensic accounting investigations and litigation support. So we go testify in various engagements, including forensic accounting investigations, contract disputes, and damages. So, you know, with our firm and experience with litigation-based assignments, especially in the contract dispute, we read contracts all day, every day. That's what we do, it gives us a unique set of experience when doing projects like this. But another caveat to that is, if at one point we wanted to write a report or a letter to Angel, this would be better served coming from a CPA firm and especially a forensic team than if one of you to write a letter, you know, this is coming from the experts, the people who know the business, know accounting, know the investigation side of the world. While our analysis would probably be similar, you know, we would be also summarizing the invoices, we would be summarizing what is in the contract, and we would be comparing what's in the contract versus what's being submitted in the invoices to a high degree of experience. And, you know, I've done this many of times, our team has done this many of times. So I think that is the big value add, is that at the end of the day, if we were to write a letter or anything that came out of it, we would be issuing that letter.
I understand that, and you're absolutely right there, but the research that is needed to go in, I don't really see too much difference, and in fact, I'm hoping that you will rely on us, because we're the ones that have worked with them, and we know specifically what happened, what didn't happen. So are you open to taking our research after we go through personally what we've worked with, with Angel Law and how we're finding it in the invoices? Will you accept that?
Yes, well, you know, I think, let me, let me caveat that. So we always work, and I think our best work is done through collaboration with us and the client. That's how we get our best results, because you know your talent better than I know your talent. That is 100% fair statement. Now, if we, if you produce an analysis, we need to do our, you know, our due diligence on that analysis. We can't just take it and say that that's correct, right? We can't just trust what you guys are presenting us, we need to do our own due diligence. But in terms of collaboration, absolutely, that is what we do, and we ask for and hope for in any of our engagements.
Yeah, because if you just got it with our input, you really wouldn't have any context to weigh or decide what is or what isn't, unless it's very black and white.
Absolutely, 100%.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else, or can we, we'll get back on the list, please, oh, sorry, Councilman Pasqua.
So maybe this is a question for afterwards, I'll ask it now, and maybe this will be answered as it goes along. But it's not a bona fide investigation like by law enforcement. So the results of this investigation, could Angel get these results and see all the findings via an opere quest? And my reason for asking that is, what if CLA found that he forgot to charge for a meeting or two, and we ended up owing him money? Could he use this the other way?
That one, you want to weigh in, Hans and Luke?
Couldn't he get it redacted?
So we would submit our report to you guys, and I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know the legal jargon on what has to be issued to the town. So that's more of a legal question that I don't feel comfortable answering on. What we would do is if, when we are finished with our analysis and our findings, we submit a report to you, to the town, and then if it has to be made public, then, then yes, he would be able to see that.
During, when we, if there's final action taken, then the report becomes public. But preliminary investigation and during the investigation process, the information is not public. But obviously, you're going to take action on a report, person's going to see what you're taking action against. So it's all, that's, that's consistent with any investigative process.
Mr. Solicitor, to follow up on?
Mr. Solicitor, to follow up on Councilman Pasqua's thought, if this investigation, we'll call it, does present something further where it ends up in a different avenue, if that report were to be requested publicly, would it fall under the ability? You know, I was being facetious, saying redacted, but to a fair statement, could we provide it to him for a fair statement, redacted?
I don't, I don't have that precise answer on the spot here, but clearly you have some rights with regard to investigative documents.
Okay.
And confidentiality with potential experts. You don't, you have those.
An answer without giving me one. Thank you.
It depends on what, what this, where this leads to, right? If it leads anywhere beyond this, beyond this building.
All right, thank you. Back to you, Luke.
Okay, the next question on my list was, in the event of the calendar as a no-go, can we add the email review to the first option for a price in the middle somewhere? And so, yes, of course. But again, these are, the quotes that we gave you are estimates. And in my line of work, it's very hard to give any sort of estimate into a job without diving in first. And the reason I say that is because at times, we do find, you know, a red flag or something that we want to dig in deeper, which might take more time, or vice versa. We find something that we thought was going to take a lot of time, and we clear it up, and it removes a lot of hours. We bill hourly. We don't have a set quote. We just bill our time. So from that understanding, yes, we can obviously, you know, incorporate the email review with the limited investigation, and that would just be our time going through it. And an associate or senior on my team would be the one doing the review of the emails, while I reviewed their work as well.
That makes sense. It's hard to know how many emails, how, you know, if you find something.
We have limited information available when we give these estimates and quotes.
Gotcha. No, that makes sense. Councilwoman Capaldi?
He didn't use email from the town. He used his own personal legal law firm's email. So he would have to give, he would just have to give those to you too, unless it's litigation, I'm assuming, correct?
If that's the case, yes, but I heard that he did have a town email.
I never received an email from him.
We're going to finish, is that he might have not used it very often.
He didn't.
We have access to his emails that he utilized with the town, with all of us. We have that access to those emails.
Correct. That was my understanding as well. So we can do as much email review as we can. It sounds like it might not be a lot of emails to review. But, you know, that's, we can, we can work with whatever we get the opportunity to review and the documents that are provided to us. We can't force anybody to send over their emails. And that would have to be done through litigation or voluntarily on his end. That is correct.
Councilman Pasqua.
Legal question. If we're forwarding emails from our previous solicitor that obviously includes sensitive information about cases, are we waiving any type of privilege or anything? Because this isn't a bona fide investigation.
We'd have to, we'd have to find a way to handle that, so they could get the information they need. And if sensitive information has to be redacted, hate to use that word, but for this gentleman, they may not need to see the sensitive information, just know that the email existed, and the, and that may be enough. I don't want to speak for him. He may need more, but we'll have to, that'll be a case-by-case, case-by-case basis. So that means we'd have to, we'd have to address those. We'd have to put that stack and go through them one by one, see what he needs, see if we can give him the information he needs, or just a date, time, and place.
Okay, so that would be basically a sub-operation of the audit through legal.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, which is not.
We would handle that.
Okay, which is not in this cost.
Right, yeah, of course not. It's, it's.
So I think one of the questions coming up is actually going to be, you know, general timeframe too. So it sounds like one thing we're going to need as we move on is, you know, obviously, check-ins before anything goes too far. I'm sure CLA is used to this, where, you know, at a certain point, you know, maybe after the first week, couple days, whatever, you know, you say what the, what the time has been so far, and, you know, some kind of update. So, you know, if we have to open up another door, it's almost like a new, a new estimate or something like that. So I'll let you answer that one. I think that's on your list anyway, Luke.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer right now, but, you know, we typically do these investigations in phases, right? Because we don't want us, with any client of ours, we don't go and spend X amount of dollars at the end and don't find anything. We like to typically meet in, and the checkpoint can be decided by any of the councilmen and men and women here, or with Dan, the town manager. But we check in, call it five, every $5,000 spent, or every $3,000 we spend and say, hey, here's our finding so far. Do you want us to continue to dig in deeper? And so that's how we typically, you know, I think is the best way to go about these engagements, so there's not costs incurred that are unnecessary.
Makes sense. All right, I think we're good over here for now. If you want to keep popping through them?
Yeah, so this, the third one on my list here was, some of the council's concerns involve us being charged for appearance and work products for committees and commissions without having his calendar. Can see, I look at public records, like meeting minutes and recordings to check the attendance. And we had discussed this earlier. Yes, we will utilize all public available information during our review.
All right, we're good?
Okay. Can CLA provide a timeline for the option? So depending on the document production, CLA can begin our work, you know, rather quickly. With the holidays coming up, you know, I would expect that the investigation, you know, holidays in terms of Thanksgiving, and then the holidays during December, I would expect that, you know, at a maximum, the investigation would be completed in early 2026.
And to that point, Council President, it all depends too on how much you give CLA. So obviously, we have the invoices from November of '22 to September of '25. So depending on how much, how many you want to give them.
Right, and then in continuing to that, it's if there are going to be redacted invoice, I mean, redacted emails, that will take some time for the legal team to figure out, and so that will add, you know, additional time. So as soon as we get everything and we get the documents we need, we have the team that can get started on this, you know, next week if we needed to.
Yeah, it almost seems like this kind of a one component where you're going to do the straight checking of, you know, services provided versus contract, you know, and then the invoices themselves. And then there's almost like, you know, we're teeing you up for a little expedition on the side with what you find for other items as well. So that's kind of what we're talking about now. So I appreciate you making that clarification, Councilwoman Capaldi.
Town manager, do we get the invoices yet? I'm sorry, I may have missed them. I've been a little crazy, but.
I sent them Wednesday.
We got them on Wednesday? Yeah, we're also going to need time to look at the invoices and to confirm for, to give you some kind of context. That's going to take, for me, I have about eight months of unredacted invoices that are now available, you know, that I have to look at and compare. So we would need to bake that timeline into the overall timeline, so they can get started.
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, as soon as you guys are done with whatever you guys need to do, but as soon as we have the documents available from CLA's perspective, we can get started right away. And to answer the question about, we don't need to do it in terms of both at the same time. We can look at the invoices, we can look at the agreements to start, and then when the emails are ready for us to review, we can also do that after.
Gotcha. Thank you, sir. Keep firing away, and not that anybody doesn't want to hang out with us on a Friday night.
I understand. If the question, the fifth question here was, if, if the only material is available to them are Angel's letter of engagement and the submitted invoices, I need to understand what value can be provided. But I think we talked about this earlier, so if any additional questions, please let me know. But if not, I can move on to the next question.
Please do.
Again, this is in conjunction with that one. I will be reviewing the invoices myself, comparing them against known events, verifying whether Angel was specific at, present at specific meetings, and evaluating the billing against the scope outlined in the LOE. I would like clarification on what additional analysis CLA will conduct that is materially different than this work. If the majority of the fact finding will be done by the council in advance, it is just difficult to justify the substantial cost in either option, particularly when I can perform much of this preliminary review at no cost. So again, you know, as much work that is done by the council would significantly reduce our fees. And again, we only bill by our time, so if we find a way that, if you guys can summarize them, and then we have an easier way to review and validate that the summaries are correct, that would obviously reduce our fees. But again, working collaboratively with, with you guys and with any clients of ours is always the best procedure from our end. There's no questions there. I can keep moving.
Go ahead. Thank you.
The seventh question was, I do not believe Angel's calendar should be treated as reliable evidence, as calendars can be edited and are not an official record of spent time. I know we talked about this, and I agree that this, there is obviously ways to manipulate calendars, to delete things. But I think we would rely on the public events and the public meetings, and also the video aspect of that, as well as an effective approach to see whether he altered his calendar, or if he's being truthful with his billing on his invoices.
He's still hands down over here. Keep marching.
Okay. Which, the eighth question was, whichever path we choose, the scope should include the RDA invoices as well, so that our review is complete and consistent against, across all relevant legal billing. I am in total agreement with that. The ninth question was, can CLA provide a breakdown of how they will analyze the invoices? There needs to be categories where we, the council, can see which areas of his billing were heavy. So we would analyze and calculate all the hours that were put into the various categories or buckets. We received one of the invoices, and I know he does differentiate between a couple different sections and categories, but also on the issues that he was serving. And so we would bucket those. We would then analyze the language used in the invoices as the descriptions and compare them to the contract to see if they were covered by the flat fee charged to the town that we noticed when we reviewed the agreement as well, that there was a flat fee that should have covered some, some job items of his. And I don't know if it has or not. We only got one invoice, and we got the contract, so we haven't really done any due diligence or analysis yet. But, you know, that, those are the things that we would be looking at, is to see what items and what line items in his invoices should have, according to the contract, been covered by that flat fee.
Great, great. That's definitely a big one. That one's pretty black and white to us, but always more to the story we're finding out. So thank you for that one. We're still good over here?
Okay, sorry about that. The 10th question was, can CLA provide a breakdown of how they will analyze invoices? Will we be looking at discrepancies, billing practices, and clients with contractual terms? Yes, that is all, I think we've discussed this, but that, those are all true, and what we would do. The next question is, what criteria will or can CLA use to determine if the charges are reasonable? Or maybe that doesn't matter. So this is the hard aspect of our engagement, where, you know, we can't determine if the correct hours was billed for certain projects. We just, we don't have that knowledge. We can't tell if it should have been two hours, or he billed four hours. We don't know how many hours it should take. We're not attorneys. And again, that's depending on the individual at the end of the day. So we can't say, all right, he overbilled you on this thing. We don't know that. What we can do is summarize the activity and how much was being billed in conjunction with all the collective bills, and to kind of give you guys a picture of how much time he was billing on a monthly or weekly basis, or even a daily basis.
Okay, thank you. Keep going.
How will CLA assess whether Angel met all agreed-upon terms? And again, this is by reviewing the agreements that were signed by Angel and the town, and looking at the invoices as well.
Good, we're still good.
What, if anything, can CLA do with the bills we receive from Angel, but for work performed by other attorneys? I would like to know if somebody has been paid a referral fee. So I guess I don't know about this. Again, I've only looked at one invoice. But if there, so I guess had some confusion about this question. But if, if you're speaking about attorneys that are part of his office, then that would be encompassed in the invoice that he delivered, and it should have a breakdown of who was billing that time and who did the work on that time. But again, if it's from other attorneys and other law firms, a chance of getting those invoices are probably very limited, but they won't turn them over, I imagine. And if they did, it was probably through a legal matter, but that's kind of the answer on that. If I, if I understood the question correctly, and if I didn't, I apologize.
Yeah, it seems like there's, there's elements here that, you know, are going to be under your scope. And then, you know, if certain things are fined, found, it goes to that next level of investigation or law enforcement route where these things could be, you know, subpoenaed and everything else, which, you know, this, this would kind of be our chance to, I don't want to call it preliminary, but, you know, surveying enough of the stuff to kind of, to get a peek at what's going on. Councilman Hall?
Thank you. That was my question. And what I meant by that was, the town, we have other legal representation that was hired by the ex-solicitor. So those attorneys would invoice the solicitor, and the solicitor would then in return submit them to the town. I'm interested to, you know, it might be almost impossible to know if Stephen Angel was being paid a referral fee from these other attorneys. But what I would like to know was the amount of money. I don't really know what I'm looking for coming out of that, besides trying to see if there was a funnel coming back. I'll just call it what it is. I'll see if there was a funnel coming back into Stephen Angel, because the town didn't control those contracts. Stephen Angel controlled those contracts.
Yeah, I understand what you're now trying to say. So again, within terms of the funneling, we wouldn't be able to determine that without getting bank records from the law firm to see if there was any monies going back into his, into his accounts. What we could do is obviously summarize those additional invoices that were provided to the town and submitted to the town. And then hopefully, in any email review, which is again, limited, maybe there was some discussions between the other counsel, the other attorneys and Angel.
That makes sense. That's good, good for that. Councilman Capaldi?
Mr. Solicitor, now that we get, we've received Angel Law's unredacted invoices, would we, are we able, are we looking forward to getting any of the contracts that he did sign on Angel Law's behalf for us? Are they coming in-house to the town of Coventry? Are we going to be managing those contracts now?
Yeah, I believe the town manager has established that all, all contracts go directly to him now. Is that correct? I don't want to, yes, he established that upon separation.
Okay, and everything went smoothly, and, because I thought we were going, we're just not getting any of his work product. That's all we're not getting. Okay, got it. Thank you.
All right, back to you.
Yep, the 14th question was, will CLA be able to identify any anomalies or patterns? And so obviously, this is our intention, but we never give surety on anything that we do. We can't give 100% certainty that we are going to find that. It's just because we don't, we haven't seen the documents. We don't know. But that is our intention, to see if there are any anomalies or patterns within the invoices. But to give you guys certainty, I can't provide that to you.
All right, and keep going.
Can CLA compare these invoices with the other solicitors? And so only if the other solicitors' invoice are provided to us, and then we can definitely compare them.
All right, keep moving.
The 16th question was, will CLA, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
No, that was just me laughing at how.
Will CLA be able to verify accuracy on any of the charges? And again, we discussed this earlier, not in terms of how much should have been spent on the projects, but hopefully with a full encompassing analysis of all the charges, we could potentially identify incorrect or overbillings, especially if we get any other additional invoices. I mean, that's whole part of the analysis, is to look at it in a big picture, and also by line by line. But in terms of saying he should have been, I discussed this earlier, but working two hours when it should have been four hours, or vice versa, it was billed by four and should only have been two. You know, we can't make that determination.
All right, here we go. Finish it up.
How many people all have access to the files? It will be limited to our forensic team here at CLA, so it'll probably be me, my principal Barry Sussman, and then maybe a few junior folks, a senior and associate, if at most. If we can do it with associate to keep costs down, that's probably our preferred method here, especially going through the invoices. I mean, that would, I would probably handle the contract review, and we'd have an associate schedule out the, the invoices itself. All right, are your employees willing to sign a disclosure agreement? So this should be covered in the master service agreement with the town and CLA already. There's a confidential, confidentiality clause in that MSA. And then the final question was, I want to ensure when this is over, we have almost 100% understanding what happened. And then the final question was, I want to ensure when this is over, we have almost a hundred percent understanding what happened. Whether anything deceitful transpired and how the town spent in each category broken down in detail. So again, we can't give you a hundred percent surety on any project we work for, but we can definitely report to the town how much was spent in each category with a detailed breakdown, um, with each description, with each category and depending on how he bucketed his invoices.
All right. Thank you very much. I know we threw a lot at you, but, uh, appreciate the answers. I think we know a lot more now than we did before, uh, but let's go around again. Councilman Hall?
There was, there was one question, um, that I actually think, uh, Mr. President may have mentioned. I didn't hear any talk in here about comparing potentially Cranston's invoicing. Um, if we can potentially get, I'm like, I, I can almost guarantee you a hundred percent that, you know, I've had conversations. I know that we can get those, those invoices. So I'm curious to know if that would be beneficial to see him on another, in another municipality.
Uh, I talked to the town manager about this as well and, and absolutely. Um, and it just gives us more information. We always like to say the more information, the better for us. And, you know, we can use that and the other invoices is if you, they're working at the same time, we can look at the hours in a week, how much he's charging both towns and then compare those two and also add those two to say, and I don't know if this is true or not. I haven't looked at the invoices, but he's working eighty or ninety hours on the two towns collectively. So it just gives us more information of how much time he has spent, but also maybe it, maybe it can show us that he was working at one or claiming to work at one place when he's also claiming to work at the other place. So yes, uh, we would, we would love to have those invoices if those are possible, uh, and we can definitely review those and add those into our analysis.
We'll get them.
Great. All right. So, uh, as far as next steps here, um, you know, for the council, just to bring us back. So, you know, originally we had two uh, options, you know, around forty K and around seventy K. We've learned that there will be a lot of fluidity in this, uh, as we approach it. We know in base, we're going to compare the contracts and invoices. That's a no brainer. You know, and we reviewed some of the other stuff tonight, uh, to the town manager. Is this, uh, going to require a resolution? I'm assuming to authorize this. So as far as the, the dollar value goes, do we want to do a not to exceed amount? Or, uh, you know, how do we want to approach, uh, you know, what we think is fair, just so we can get the resolution going and things like that. I know we've been on this issue for a while and I know we're eager to get some execution going here. So thoughts from anybody up here or?
I, I thought, uh, Luke, if I remember incorrectly, he made a good suggestion where he would, you know, we could set a threshold or he would update us every, you know, it's almost like he's got a, like my kid's allowance, you know, every forty dollars for a school lunch money, I get a notification that he needs to re-up it. So it's kind of the same thing. We, you know, we agree to whatever the, you know, whatever the council wants to agree to, we had the two prices set in front of us. To me, we know he's going to at least spend there. He's telling us. So it's to cap it below that. Um, I thought in the explanation of what they were doing, you know, he has mentioned that they will provide us with updates that they'll, you know, it's a collaborative effort. So, you know, for me, I think the cap it needs to be a minimum of, of whatever that, you know, the, no, I'm not for the forty. I think for, I think spending forty thousand dollars on this is an absolute waste of money. We should add the other thirty thousand. Um, we're going to get a very limited scope. There's not a lot of hours spent on that thirty thousand dollar mark. Um, it's almost like, you know, maybe council and Capaldi could do that for that price. Um, truthfully, I would want to go even deeper than what we're doing. I just don't think the council would, would allow that to go. Um, we spent a hundred and sixty thousand on a car wash. Let's find out exactly what happened here. And listen, at the end of the day, we don't want anything to happen. But one of the biggest things that we should learn from this is procedures. If we don't take procedures out of this and in ways that we've operated and things like, that's really what I'm looking from CLA is, you know, one of the things that I, I sent over in the questions that didn't get addressed was procedure, you know, procedurally, what did we do wrong? CLA does this, they, you, we're not the only one that they're talking to. So they see procedures from all kinds of municipalities. And not only do I want the results of what they find, I'd like recommendations. Because without recommendations, what's our, you know, what's the bar that we're reaching for?
Councilman Pasquale?
I think the audit's a good idea, but I, I'm just really trying to weigh out the pros and cons of what we're doing. What are we benefiting? How, how are we actually going to benefit from this? And, and what are we, what risks are we opening ourselves up to by doing this as well? Cause there's, there's always a con to everything. So, you know, I, I, I just, I have to really come to, to terms with, how are we going to benefit? Well, if we found that Angel overbuild us and, you know, going back to what CLA said, they're not legal experts. They really don't know the industry standard value and cost on a certain type of legal memorandum, uh, document or whatever that was built and what that could cost and what it should cost. So basically we're going to get a summary of you paid this much for these many hours of legal work with really no idea if that was appropriate. So I, I really need to understand what are we going to benefit from this besides good feedback and procedural changes? How are we going to benefit this? Are we, are we going to be able to recoup any funds? You know, I, I, I don't know. I'm not sure. And then is there a legal cost associated with suing Angel Law and going to court and, you know, dealing with all those legal fund, you know, trying to get recoup some legal funds. Then on the other side of this, could we possibly have to pay him something because he, through our audit, he realized he didn't charge for an RDA meeting or something. I, I don't know. So I, I, I think it's a good idea. I'm, I'm not against it and, and I'll support some type of, of sort of look back on this, but I'm just really struggling with how much money I want to put into this because I'm, I feel like I'm just trying to shine a light around a room to find something that may not even be there and it could cost in the end.
Yeah, I think when we first kind of looked into this, it was like, one way or another, we have to look. You know, and then these two kind of situations presented themselves. I, I understand what, what everyone's saying on this. I think we owe it to ourselves and obviously the town to a certain extent to, to pursue what we can, but I, I understand there's kind of a line there. Which, uh, is why I'm glad CLA kind of brought up the, you know, almost, uh, different points as, as you make your way through. So, you know, just throwing it out there for idea generation purposes, you know, uh, maybe we set it at fifty grand, not to exceed with the chance to go up. But if we have check-ins every five grand or whatever we're happy with, you know, we get to twenty, twenty-five grand and we're seeing that, you know, there's just, just not a ton there. I mean, you know, it's at your guys' pleasure though. I mean, I, I know we're on the way to addressing it, which is, you know, first and foremost. So, um, Councilwoman Capaldi?
To Councilman Pasquale's, uh, comment, I think we're going to find out that the town, this administration, we had the, the wool pulled over our eyes. We did not know. We did whatever he wanted us to do. We could not confirm if it should be a hundred dollars or it should be five thousand dollars or it should be five dollars. We know what we have to do now. We know from those mistakes, do we need to spend this money to just prove that? Because to Pasco's point, it's going to cost money every time we go to litigation. That's a given. We know that. If it shows that we overpaid him or he, I don't want to use the word stole because that is not what we can say, but somehow the wool was pulled over our eyes and five hundred thousand dollars went back to him. Whose fault was that? Was he clever? And we're not going to be able to recoup it because we're not going to be able to go to court on it. So I think we all have to think really strong up here. If we're going to spend thirty thousand, forty thousand, fifty thousand, sixty thousand to already give us the same answer that we have right now. I don't know. I mean, that's what I'm thinking. I mean, do I want to prove that he did something wrong? Do I want to get back what he took from us? Yeah. But are we going to be able to do that? Or do we just set the motion now and never let that happen to us again?
Yeah. I mean, obviously another, you know, fallout from that is going to be uh, for the future of this town and this council for people to realize that, you know, should we expect this again? This is the repercussions deal.
We should never expect this again.
Well, I mean, should it happen again, people will, you know, I'm hoping realize how serious we take these things.
It should never happen again.
It's not just going to, you know, go away.
Shame on us if it happens again.
Yeah.
For any future council that sits up here, for any town manager that sits over there, for any new solicitor that sits here, this should never happen again because we know.
Councilman Dowen, I think you were next.
Luke, can you share an average or an estimate of how much money and controversy you see your clients coming to, to expect to spend this type of money on an investigation or an audit?
Can you repeat that question? So are you asking how much is at stake typically?
Yeah. So I'm seeing a seventy thousand dollar invoice for a full twenty-seven month audit. How much money would a, a general customer come to you and, and spend on this expecting to recover?
Yeah, yeah, it varies. I mean, we, we have, we, we have a lot of different clients, um, some larger, some smaller, that have us review their work and, and look at what's being charged and in this situation. So I guess I'm still, I, I guess I'm struggling with the question of.
I assume that you don't have a lot of clients who come to you with a seventy thousand dollar claim and looking to spend seventy thousand dollars to do that audit, correct? You're probably not getting a lot of business on it.
I, I would, I would agree with you on that. Yes. And what we do try to tell them that perhaps that the cost that you are spending on this might not be worth it if you're going to spend X amount of dollars to try to recover X amount of dollars. Absolutely.
Have we shared with you the total amount that we might be expected to recover or the, the total amount that we've spent?
I, I think I have a range of how much was invoiced over the last three years.
And most of your customers would spend seventy thousand dollars to engage in that audit?
I, I, I can't tell you what most of my customers wouldn't, wouldn't do. They would, a lot of my clients either come with me and we, we work on small engagements, you know, ten thousand dollar engagements and we work on multiple hundred thousand dollar engagements. So we have a wide variety of different clients, some very small, some very large.
Okay. And the seventy thousand dollars that was just looking at our invoices, if we were to add on Cranston and, and look at their invoices, so we could do a compare, would we be looking at roughly a fifty percent increase for the efforts or would that be a hundred or?
No, I, I think it would still be in that ballpark because that's how, what I discussed with the town manager when we, when we went through it was to include the Cranston invoices if we were able to get them. But again, th- this, it's very hard to ballpark these. I, I can imagine that these with, especially without the email review and the calendar review, it's going to be well less than what, what, what we stated in our proposal or in our estimate, even, even if we'd look at every lineup for the twenty-seven months for the, you know, limited or the full scale investigation. I mean, it, it's going to be closer i- if not less than the limited investigation.
Okay. Thanks. And I haven't seen all the invoices. I just had the last seven months. Have those been sent to other council people?
I can send you those, Councilman. The first, uh, two years, yes. I can send them to you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Back to you, Councilwoman Capaldi.
Thank you. I'd really like to hear from the public. I want to hear what they want us to do. I want to hear what their thoughts are. Are they hearing what we're saying up here? I know we've got a few people in this audience, not really anyone on Zoom. It's Friday night at six o'clock. Um, do we already know what we know and not do it again? Is this spending this money, seventy thousand dollars out of our taxpayers going to change anything? I don't think so.
Councilman Hall?
You know, I, I, I'm trying not to get frustrated up here, but I'm going to give an example. So all we keep talking about is the amount of money that we're going to get back and the amount of money we're going to get back. How many police prosecution cases prosecute somebody with no chances of getting any restitution? So the reason to investigate, to audit or to prosecute isn't because you're looking to get money back. That's seventy thousand dollars. This already happened. Who remembers when council, ex council president Hillary Lima sat up here and stated falsely without proof that the ex solicitor was, there was fraud happening. You, all of you counsel, except for the two new people, sat up here and listened when Hillary made that accusation. And guess what? We're here again, Councilwoman Capaldi. It happened again. So, so we're just supposed to wipe an audit away? Mr. Angel, just enjoy the, your eight hundred plus thousand dollars that you billed the town. And the next solicitor is going to come in and they're going to do the same damn thing. And the excuse up here is going to be, well, you know, is it worth to prosecute? That's why people commit blue collar crime because they don't get prosecuted. So I'm not looking at this as a way to get any money back. I'm looking at it to correct that this town has a continued process of repeating the same mistakes. So here we are, second solicitor, still haven't fixed the invoice issues. And now we're sitting up here questioning whether we should be doing this. Every one of these council people, when this audit question came up in public, everyone was supporting it. And it sounds up here now that everyone is like, well, this isn't maybe not worth it.
I think though, that, that's not what.
Hold on one sec, one sec. Uh, just for the record, I don't think anybody over here is saying anything about not going through with it. Um, I think we all at least motioned that we wanted to do this in some capacity. Really the question now is uh, strategically, since we've, we've got the answers from CLA is how do we move it forward in either a, a resolution or something like that is where we kind of go next. I don't think anybody wants to put the brakes on it. We've got a couple of hands up, uh, Councilman Pasquale.
Mr. President, if I may, oh, just one second. I know Luke has a hard stop at sixteen. So just so you guys can wrap up with him.
Do we think we're good, uh, with CLA as far as that goes right now?
We're good with CLA. I just do want to make final comment.
All right. Thank you very much, uh, CLA Luke. We appreciate it.
Thank you all for the time today and, uh, have a great Thanksgiving and, uh, any questions that you guys have, please just reach out and I'm happy to send over my responses. Thank you.
Appreciate you. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Capaldi?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I get you? I'm sorry.
Just really quick, you know, I, I just also want to set the record straight on this. I'm not against doing some type of audit or investigation here. I'm just trying to find the happy medium. Where we're not emptying our pockets for, for potentially nothing. So I really like the idea of checking in, almost having like a draw schedule. This is what we found so far. This is where we're at. Do we want to keep going? If we're finding nothing early on, there's no indication of everything and it's really easy to understand, maybe, maybe we, we've learned what we need to learn. But that's really my, my, my position here. I think we should, got to do something. I just trying to figure out what's the happy medium.
Councilman?
Yeah, I want to, um, say also, it's not that I don't want to do this, but I think we already know our answer. That's what I'm trying to say. I think we know our answer and shame on us if we let this ever happen again. If we need to do this for optics and to prove that, yeah, he was doing it. And we have that documentation that he was doing A, B and C. I could tell you, I already know that he was charged for things he didn't do. I have it. I have it. And I've stated it over and over again. I know what he charged for that he did not do. So yeah, we know that we were screwed. We, we, we know that. If we need to do this on whatever level you guys decide, I'm open to whatever. We'll do it just to prove the point. I know we got screwed by him and it'll never happen again. But if we have to do the audit, let's do it. Everyone else's money. It's this town's money. That's all I want to be. And I do like the option of check-ins. Okay. We know that he did this, this and this. Okay. We're not going to recoup that money, but we're we are, the optics of it is showing we're serious and that we're going to do this. Okay. I just want to say, we know the answer now. We all know the answer now.
Vice President Brown?
I'm in support of doing an audit. I agree with Councilman Hall's approach to this. I think he's right on with what he said. I will support it. And I think it's also good that we'll get updates going along so we can make decisions as it goes along. So, uh, it's definitely the right thing to do.
Yeah. Uh, as far as I'm concerned, it makes the most sense to me. I think we're hearing from at least the, most of us up here. We want the audit and we want the baseline and, you know, it's almost like we're, we're going to see where it takes us to a certain extent. But we can put, you know, some kind of cap on the beginning, uh, just so, you know, obviously it's not a runaway train. For the town manager and the solicitor, what kind of, uh, information will we need for a resolution to make this, you know?
And if you think if the council decides they want a, the resolution to basically hire CLA, whether not to exceed amount of thirty, forty, fifty thousand with bi-weekly check-ins, so into that effect, we can, we can draw. 30, 40, 50,000 with bi-weekly check-ins, something to that effect, we can draw that up.
Oh, Councilman Dowen?
I have serious concerns about this company's ability to do a legal investigation. They are financial experts, that's fine, but Luke just told us that they don't have any staff attorneys. They have no idea what it takes to do certain things on legal billing. I have concerns that the information that we would receive as a product for them may not be something that's actionable enough to waste or spend the amount of money that we want to spend. I do believe that recuperating money is secondary to making sure that things are done correctly. But I, I'm not sure that this is the right place to go for this type of service. And personally, I'd like to see if we can find somebody else who has legal expertise who would be able to look through these types of invoices and say, I'm familiar with this type of work. We, we have plenty of municipal attorneys who'd probably offer this type of service to do some review. Maybe not in Rhode Island based on the small circle, but this is the similar type of work that happens everywhere. And I don't think that looking at one auditor is the appropriate way to say, let's jump in. $50,000 is a lot of money. $70,000 is a lot of money. And if we're at the bottom of that and we're just gonna keep running it up to do the investigation, I'm not sure that it's worth it.
Councilman Hall, I think you were first by here.
I think, I think some of it, just to Councilman Dowen's point, the reason why CLA was brought forward was due to the cost because they are an inside auditing firm for the town already. To go to an external auditing firm, we were potentially looking at hundreds of thousands potentially. But I don't know. I'll let Mr. Perlo finish that.
I mean, if council wants to go to RFP with those, with that criteria, we could always do that, but that's gonna really extend your timeframe.
And I understand everybody wanting to get this done quickly, but I think everyone up here has said it's more important to get it right than to do it quickly. And for me, throwing bad money, chasing bad money is not a great idea. So if we can find a way, an RFP doesn't cost us anything. If we can get a couple more presentations to have another firm that seems, you know, better equipped to do this type of work. And maybe they're not out there. Maybe that, maybe CLA is the appropriate place after we've had a few more conversations.
Yeah, it gives me an idea. Can you, can we, do we ever do RFQs just to see who's qualified for these kinds of things?
Usually we do it RFP, but we can do an RFQ. I'm sure we can work on that and get that out.
I mean, just so it might be a little bit quicker, something to think about. Councilman Pasqua?
I like that idea about putting an RFP out there and maybe looking towards qualifications for a legal review. And I think we'll have the added benefit, correct me if I'm wrong, but we'll have privilege out of that because if we work with a law firm on this, now what we're doing is protected by privilege, which is not something that CLA will fall in that circle with. I think that's a big benefit to us.
You guys don't talk up here.
Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Capaldi?
Yeah, I just want to say to Councilman Dowen's point, yeah, it may push out the timeline a little bit, but we also have a bunch of invoices to go through and to do our due diligence on his contract. Just exactly what CLA was stating that they're gonna do. We gotta do our legwork and we have to start, well, obviously we got him on Wednesday, so we have to start soon to start doing that. And I think we should have periodic meetings internally to talk about our findings while we're searching for the next, and I agree with you, we should have a, an auditing firm that understands legal. I think that kind of makes sense. But we have to do our due diligence and we have to meet and talk about our findings as we're waiting.
All right. Well, we've, we've gone around a few different times. I think we've now landed on perhaps going out to a procurement is, is that where we're, where maybe our heads are at? All right, go ahead.
Just real quick, it seems like if CLA is doing their audit and they start finding stuff and we have periodic updates, why wouldn't we turn this over to the state police financial crimes unit?
Good, all right, go ahead.
To Vice President Brown's point, I thought this was the whole reason why CLA was in front of us because it was the first step. If something was found here for us to go to state police. I thought that this was the presentation of why, because I would have went to the state police first. But they won't touch it generally until you have some sort of an audit process. So I think it, you know, we can do whatever the council's pleasure is as far as an RFP or an RFQ, but I, I still think the cost is gonna be the cheapest here where then the fight, the criminal aspect, if there happens to be one, would be free of some sort from the state police. But we wouldn't pay for that at all. So just my thought. Can I make a motion?
Just under the.
I want to make a motion.
The town manager report, but.
It says informational invotes may be taken at any and all items.
Go for it.
I'd like to make a motion to approve CLA audit scope in regards to Solicitor Angel's invoicing. I would like to cap, I'd like the extended version of the audit. I do think bi-weekly council meeting updates, if applicable, should be presented to the council. I will also agree at a cap of $50,000. Anything above and beyond that needs council approval, majority of the council. Yeah, that's my motion.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second discussion on this motion.
So to Solicitor, obviously we don't have the resolution in front of us, but we can prepare it for the second?
Well, I think this is to prepare a resolution.
Okay.
So I'll amend my, I'll amend my motion to add to the next town council meeting agenda, a resolution to hire CLA for the extended audit. Same guidelines as I had mentioned, $50,000 cap, bi-weekly meeting updates if applicable.
I amend it for a second then.
There you go. All right, we have an amended motion and amended second. And any discussion on these?
I'm going to, who is going to handle the process of reaching out to the city of Cranston to solidify those invoices? Is that something that should happen?
I can, I can talk to the Solicitor.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilwoman Capaldi?
How are we gonna answer the questions about the legal issues as Councilman Dowen brought up during this process? I mean, do we? But isn't there a discussion?
Yeah, discussion on this motion.
Well, that's part of it because if we're gonna vote now on this motion and there's a different option with bringing legal expertise in here, wouldn't that change the motion?
You would just vote it down.
Okay, I just wanted to answer the question answered. I don't know how I'm gonna get that answer.
What was the question again? Sorry.
The question is, if we, during the process of when we, if we hire CLA and we're going through the process, not higher than 50,000, you know, they check in, blah, 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 all that stuff. What if we have legal questions? Or if they have legal questions that they can't answer, what happens at that point? I'm just confused that how, how are we gonna?
Well, they're not, they're not doing a legal analysis. They're doing a forensic audit. And then if some illegalities come up and they bring that to our attention, then that would get turned over to the beginning of a state police investigation, but they're not gonna.
So any legal questions will go over to the state police?
Well, criminality, not a legal question.
No, well, that's what I meant.
Yeah.
If we have, but they won't have. Yeah, I guess that'll work. I mean, I just want to make sure that we know that we have a plan.
Yeah, like there's no legal analysis. They're not gonna say, okay, on this topic, you should have spent two hours, you spent four hours. They're not gonna provide that.
That's not gonna happen because different attorneys work different lengths of time and everything. And different attorney, you could go to one attorney is charging you $1,000 an hour and then there's an attorney that charges you $50 an hour. So that's irrelevant too. But in your motion, should, should we state that any, you know, once we start finding these finances, it goes to state police?
I would think that we would be obligated to supply it to the state police. If someone didn't, then they would be breaking the fiduciary. If there's anything criminal that's happened or found, they would have no option but to turn it over.
How would we know it's criminal though? I mean, how do we know it's criminal until the police get involved?
That's why we have an amazing Solicitor.
Yeah, I think the, the point of what CLA would bring up would be things that are questionable from a billing perspective, irregularities with the contract. But eventually, like you're saying, Councilwoman, there's gonna be a question that is a toss-up because, you know, who can say how many hours something should have taken, this and that. But, you know, it's, it's just one of these psychological things where you don't know what's in the box until you look in the box. And it's kind of where we're at. But I really can, can see it both ways. Obviously, I agree, we need to, to look into it. I think Councilman Dowen had something on this one too. Or are you good?
Just for clarification, this is just, we'll be taking the vote at the next meeting on this, right? So we're just, to put it on the agenda effectively.
This is discussion, sorry, I should have reset here. This is discussion on the current motion, which is to draft the resolution for the next meeting. Councilman Mars?
Just kind of following up on this. Did we talk about like financial thresholds in regards to review? Or did we just talk about the bi-weekly meetings where we're gonna kind of touch base and follow up with CLA?
I believe Councilman Hall was had a $50,000. So what we would do is essentially like in a regular contract, do like a not to exceed, but you know, I don't know if we'd even, we might not necessarily even get to that point. And maybe it's weekly instead of bi-weekly. I don't know. I mean, there's a lot of hours in a week if they have that many people working on it. I mean, you know, if they put 40 hours in on a week or something like that between the three or four staff, five staff, whatever they said they had. I mean, maybe we've got something, something there and.
Yeah, we can always have Luke back on the December 2nd meeting if we have to answer any more questions prior to the vote. Yeah.
Just for inquiry purposes, if there's something listed on the report of the town manager and it states for informational invotes may be taken at any and all times, what is the process and why do we have to wait in order for this to be a resolution in order to vote on it?
I think it's because nobody had an idea what the resolution would be, Councilman. So there was no resolution.
So then maybe we should.
There was no resolution drafted because it was a discussion and an interview with them. So.
I'm just curious.
The draft one to know was anyone else.
In what position or at what moment would anything come under the report of a town manager then? That would be accompanied by a resolution that would require a vote? Because if we can't vote on anything that's under that category because it needs to have a resolution attached to it, well, then there would be no votes taken on the, under that category, correct? Just for like, just for education purposes for myself.
Just to your point, this resolution would not be created for next meeting without this vote. That's the vote that's being taken under this matter.
So the vote is to add it on the agenda?
Right, add it on the agenda. For, to create a resolution and put it on the agenda. I mean, just, we're getting hyper-technical here, but that's what's going on because it's happened in real time.
Councilman Pasqua?
And just to add it, it's a resolution that's going on the agenda, which could be amended when you're considering it anyway. So it's kind of, it's really a, not, it's not a big vote here.
All right, we are, had a motion, had a second, had a discussion. Any further comments, Councilman?
I just want to clarify, what agenda is this going on? What date? Thank you.
Unless we're gonna be back here tomorrow. All right. I think we're ready for a vote then. You want to do a roll call on this one?
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mars?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
President Verducci?
Yes.
Seven and the affirmative, zero and the negative motion passes.
Right, so we will revisit this at the next one. Again, I think it's helpful if we have technical stuff in the meantime. Let's get it, you know, questions or other points we want to make, get it over to the town manager and solicitor and, you know, that'll feed into the resolution, Councilman, Councilwoman?
Can we see a draft of it before the, yeah?
Before we get the actual packet?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. If we could please, that'd be a good idea. Thank you.
Yeah, that'll be Tuesday or Wednesday next week. It has to be, we're to post it Wednesday, so I'll probably get it to you Tuesday. The next order of business, so today was the deadline for the RFP selection. We've got six packages in for people that want to be solicitors. So I just want to discuss what the council's process wants to be. So we do have to open up the bids in public, so we're gonna do that Monday. And that'll identify who the six firms are that are applying. But I don't know if the council wants to have a special meeting to interview. Do you want to do it prior to the December 2nd meeting? I'm thinking probably at least a half hour each, so that's three hours right there. So I don't know what the council's pleasure is. And we'll also have a scoring rubric. Maria Sitch will create a scoring rubric for you to help you make your decision.
And when we did this, it's lowest qualified bidder? Is that how we approached it or?
We was just, everyone had needed to meet the qualifications.
Right, okay.
A little bit threshold. Basically, meet the qualifications, submit your package.
Okay, so best qualified, you know, however we wanted to call that. One thing that comes to mind on this, are we clear of charter implications as far as administrative tasks? Is this considered something we can do administratively as a council? I know there's a, there's a piece of our charter that references council members not doing administrative tasks.
Repoints the Solicitor, this is, this is your task.
So that's good, okay. And then whatever you guys think, I mean, that, that does put it in perspective. If, if we want to do interviews, that's, you know, you're looking at a few hours. So obviously this is a very important issue. So, you know, if it's worth our time to break up that way and, you know, would we essentially be a panel along with, you know, yourself and how would that work, you think?
I mean, I don't think I'm a part of it.
Okay, interesting.
Just for the fact that it's a council appointment. I mean, I can be there if you want me to, but I'm saying I would think that this is a truly council decision.
As usually towns do this, they do it in executive session. They interview the applicants in executive session. That's the interview process. And then once you make your decision, obviously it's a public decision. But that's just the usual case because it's up to you however you want to do it, but that's usually.
Spending time together, so that sounds great. Maybe we can start breaking it up into a couple or, you know, so we've got options, but that at least helps set the tone for how it would go. So thank you. I was a little confused on that stuff too. Councilwoman?
I just want to throw this out there and I don't know where this goes, but after we select our new Solicitor, I think we should consider going out to RFP for the assistant solicitors. We did not vote on that in executive session when we talked about it. We just discussed, okay, we'll keep him. I think we should think about that. That's my point.
I believe that the council's already decided to keep Mr. Igliosi and Mr. Verdeckia as assistant solicitors. That was the, how the RFP went out.
If Mr. Igliosi, because he's throwing his hat into the ring, then there's going to be an open seat. And I think that if that happens, I would like to have an RFP for both assistant solicitors. Because then this Solicitor that sits in that seat is able to make recommendations for the assistant solicitors.
Councilman Pasqua?
I just, my concern right now is that we're talking about conversations that happen in executive session, which would open up all of our minutes for everything that we talked about. So I just want to make a point, probably.
I just want to make, just that we didn't vote.
No, I know, but some of this discussion happened.
Yeah, thank you for the reminder. Thank you for that, Vice President Brown?
I think I'd like to see us get the packages from all six of them, each council member. And then maybe us score them like one through five and then we take an average and we bring back the top three. I don't know if we have to sit there and interview all six. I think we can pare it down based on what the averages is and we're all doing this on our own time instead of sitting in there trying to make a decision one night. Just an option to kind of scale.
Just an option to kind of scale it down.
Yeah, that doesn't hurt. But we just have to wait until you open them publicly, then it's public, you can send them. So that's a good idea. Thank you for that. Councilman Hool?
I think one of the things that I want to, I want to fix here is I do want the town manager involved in the process. I think although the solicitor works at the pleasure of the council, we can probably all agree that the conversations between the town manager and the solicitor happen way more frequent than the conversations between the council members and the solicitor. I look at Dan and his position, the town manager, as the mayor of the town. It's his job on a day to day operation basis. And although the solicitor works at the pleasure of the council, we owe it to our town manager to give him that space. So your recommendation, although maybe not granted, I still think is warranted and valued. Because if we don't support our town manager in in his quest for whatever it may be, you know, we can't hold him liable, you know what I mean? Like, he needs the tools to to succeed.
Yeah, good point. So we could perhaps, obviously, it's on our appointment, but with the advice of town manager or something like that, yeah. Nothing stopping us from doing that, I'm guessing, no? All right. All right.
It's just like it makes the most sense, it's the day to day operations of what they need to solve.
Councilman Darwin?
I defer to our solicitor, but I think the charter says that the solicitor gets to pick and appoint the assistant solicitor with the town council's approval. So we ultimately have the decision, but I think it, I think it is chosen by the solicitor, just to clarify.
What is, say that again?
In the charter.
Correct.
Itself, it says that the town council picks the solicitor.
Yep.
But that the solicitor picks an assistant solicitor.
Correct, but we, we, we can draft the RFP, however, because we have the pleasure of doing that. So we could, although he has the say in it, I, I don't want to get too far in discussion, just to John's point earlier, but I'll, I'll, good point, I'll follow up.
Yeah.
All right, so so far, it looks like, again, we're just on our discussion of this. We've kind of got two ideas circulating right now. Wait till the bids are opened publicly, distribute those six, I believe you said, six. What's that? I would say Monday, right? I mean, you're just literally opening them in public, right? And then scan them, send them, so Monday? Yeah.
Just because I've never seen that, what does that process look like? Is it recorded? Or do you just sit at your desk and open them and send them out? On camera, I'm assuming? It's advertised? Because I didn't know that was happening on Monday, so if the public's welcome to come, we got to let them know. Just my thought. Did the RFP have the date when we were open them? Okay.
Nope, solicitor, I think has to, I guess I'm.
I just wanted to indicate to the board and I'm sure the town manager is aware, this, this is, town solicitors, legal, legal employment is not subject to the bidding process. That's the process you decided to use. So if it's a true bidding process, it's a whole different thing. You would have had to say whether it was going to be based upon RFQ or RFPQ. The whole bidding process does not apply to architects, engineers and attorneys. So that bidding process, that's why you chose this process because it was transparent and open, but it's not a process that we.
Yeah, so this this prevents somebody from going in their office, opening them, unsealing them. So it's got to be sealed. I'm sure there's a methodology to the way they're sealed, so they can't be tampered with or manipulated or looked at to mess anything up.
That's fine, but if we're doing it publicly, then there would be some matter there of, like, why would we do it publicly if we're not advertising to the public or have it on camera? Right, the whole idea, I understand what Mr. Solicitor is saying because we're not bidding like the lowest bidder or the highest bidder. It's more of just the pleasure of the council who they want to hire. Understood. Yeah, I'm just, I'm. Yeah, whatever your process.
They could do, and then ultimately, once you make your decision, people will know what you decided.
Because it's not a bidding, so it's not, it's.
Exactly.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, so anyway, that was the first part, I believe. We'll do that, we'll get those. And then Vice President Brown's suggestion, you know, take some time, give ourselves, I don't know, a week, two weeks, whatever we want to do to score them internally. Maybe do the top three and then have them in for an executive session, interview with the advice and involvement of town manager. And then at that point, do we vote on that interview night or do we just do the interviews and?
Normally, the council will have an executive session scheduled and they'll have an open session item. So it'll be both plays. So if if you do decide to to make the decision that night, you will talk among yourself and then you decide and then you come out and take a vote. Or ratify the vote, however you want it. You can vote in and vote out, but you want to do it again outside.
Yeah, right. Okay. All right, everyone, good discussion. This all new to us, so I think we did all right. Good suggestions from everybody, I think we're all on the same page. So I think that closes that item, Mr. Manager? All right, we got Carusa now.
Dan said an hour, I never say an hour.
You didn't have to tell us anything.
Yeah. All right, then, moving swiftly along to our next item on the agenda. We have report of town offices and officials. Under that, we have our planning director, Doug McLean, is here. A little background on this, obviously, it's good to always have for our new folks. Also, some of us have had some questions in general. You know, we get a lot of questions, concerns on zoning. I think what we're really just kind of looking for is the, you know, the overarching thing. We know how complicated your world gets. So, you know, something kind of high level, discuss where we're at. And I think then we'll, we'll probably have some questions and things like that. But appreciate you spending your Friday night with us, Mr. Planner.
No problem. I can just keep it like two minute high level because I get a sense that the idea is you might have specific questions for me. I have a sense, we're not talking about any individual properties, but we can talk about process.
Difference even between zoning and code enforcement, stuff like that, just, you know.
Try to keep it there. I do serve as the town zoning enforcement officer. I do have a staff person who generally helps me in that role. She shares that title or deputy zoning enforcement officer. That's because there's a lot of work, a lot of it has to do with site investigations, making observations. And then based on those observations, making interpretations of code, making determinations when something is a clear code violation. And then we have a process of documenting the communication to a violating party. We have two steps, there's a step where they get a notice of order, which is basically it's a warning document. It's letting them know what is the issue and that we're looking for corrective actions. There's a timeframe in which they can correct the situation on the site. If that doesn't happen, we move to another step of documentation, that's a notice of violation. And that comes with recording it. And there's greater levels of enforcement, penalties, fines. That's where we basically can take more different actions, oftentimes through municipal court. So there is a, really, the goal of zoning enforcement is to get compliance. We're looking to communicate what the issue is. Oftentimes, most people don't understand they had a violation. We communicate it, we give a timeframe that we think is reasonable to get compliance. The goal is to get compliance, and if we don't, then we have to elevate it to a higher level. That's, I think, and I do the zoning code enforcement, there's building code enforcement handled by the building official. There's licensing code enforcement that's handled by police and or, you know, any of these things might relay to conferring with our solicitors. But that's a quick summary of it, happy to take any questions.
You know, that was good right there, even right at the end, so say that one more time. So zoning license, building code, three separate avenues.
Yeah, they'd be different authorities and I'm learning about them because we, without getting into details, we're, we're looking into what licensing code enforcement looks like, that's generally done through the police. And then if there's issues with someone, for example, breaking a business license, a good example of that is businesses are licensed to perhaps serve alcohol until 1:00 AM. And someone serving alcohol at 4:00 AM, that's breaking a business license. And then the police can come and they can cite, and then people can potentially have licenses addressed or revoked. That's largely done with the police and then they'd be coming back to municipal court. There's a range of other violations that might occur in the town, but, you know, someone might violate a soil erosion sedimentation control permit. And then the town engineer would say, here's a corrective action. But the biggest violations are zoning, building code, those are the core areas of violations that we typically deal with.
Yeah, we had one the last, within the last two weeks where a gentleman refused to cut his grass. We couldn't make communication with him, sent him numerous letters, ended up going to court. And the judge ordered us to cut the person's property and leave the property. So that went through building enforcement, building code.
See, that's, all right, so I would have guessed wrong, so that's really building code.
Yeah, because it's, it's.
It's not a zoning issue.
Exactly. So they're all broken into different buckets depending on what the violation is. A lot of times they work together, so Kerry and Anthony will work together, Kerry, Anthony and the police will work together. Depending on what the issue is, the extent of the issue, if there's any potential, not threats, but you don't want Kerry or Anthony going to a residence that may be a little bit questionable, who's giving the neighbors a hard time. And so we have the police kind of step up and help as well. So it's definitely a multi-pronged attack to a lot of these things, it's not just bucketed to one particular department.
Gotcha, and so this is a pretty right down the middle kind of example you gave. So around, how long did that whole process kind of take to to flesh out? And was that from like a resident complaint?
Yes, that one in particular, 30 days, but I think, because I think the statute actually says if you don't cut your grass in 10 days, we can take enforcement action. But like Doug said, we want compliance, we don't want to find people, we don't want to lean people's properties, we're looking for compliance. The NOO, NOV process, that's probably 60 to 90 day process. Because it's the NOO is 30 days, the NOV is 30 days. And then by the time it goes to court, you're probably talking another 30 days. So that's probably about an extended process.
So that's what was in my head, but you said this one was 30 because what made this one different?
Well, there was, we tried to, we tried to extend our ability to communicate with the person. We didn't want to just cut his grass after 10 days.
Right.
We gave him two additional notices to come to, to meet with us, communicate with us before we cut your grass and leave the property.
Okay.
So that one could take 10 days, but again, we're looking for compliance.
The timeline given in the code is the 10 days.
Correct.
So that one's got a shorter fuse on it.
Yeah, we could have done it on day 11, cut his grass.
Okay.
But it's, we're trying, looking for compliance. So the NOO, NOV is more of a, that process is a lot more strategic, there's more documentation. Because you're talking about zoning and the fines are pretty, pretty high on some of these things. So there's more documentation necessary before we get to municipal court.
Okay, so we've got a nice overview, we've got an example that was pretty cut and dry on the grass. Councilwoman Capaldi?
I'm obviously not going to say names or properties, but I am really confused on what a customary home occupation is. I don't know. Could you tell me in your, in your expertise, what it is? What do people do to break this law? And, yeah, because obviously, we've been hearing about that a lot.
So I think maybe the best way to describe issues as it relates to that is to first discuss that if there was an instance in which the town violated somebody saying that you're breaking the home, customary home occupation code, and the person came back and said, I'm not running a customary home occupation, I'm a resident, then that's their defense. So what we look for is, we're looking for people that aren't trying to claim that they're a customary home occupation. We're looking for people that are clearly running a use that is illegal in the zone. So I think that that's, you know, and and there's been situations I've attempted to communicate that in general, sometimes specifically in email. I think the, the customary home occupation intent of that code was if someone wants to identify, I am running a business in my home. That's what I'm doing, I'm conducting business, it's a business activity. And I'm going to have customers coming and there's rules about how I'm going to do this. It doesn't work if someone's not trying to claim I am running a business in the home. If the claim is, I am a resident doing activities that a residential property owner is allowed. That's why that's a little bit of a miss from a code perspective. You could send the violation and in municipal court, they'd say, I do not claim to be customary home occupation, I claim to be a resident. That's, that's the quick nuts and bolts of that, it's a high general level.
Thank you.
Vice President Brown?
Yeah, your office does a great job, but what is your exact title? Because I know we've kind of.
I tried, yeah. I serve as, I, I have the title Director of Planning and Development. For the Planning Commission and for certain duties I do, I have the title of Administrative Officer. That title comes with the powers of taking out the, taking on the daily work of the Planning Commission. When I serve as the Chair of TRC, I'm serving as the Administrative Officer. When I sign plans that might not even rise to going to the Planning Commission, I sign as the Administrative Officer. And then I carried the title of Zoning Enforcement Officer. And that is the, that's the role of interpreting the zoning code. And then that does come with more than just enforcement, that comes with the idea that if someone wants to know, am I allowed to do this use on this property? It's not happening yet, I just want to know, am I allowed? You write zoning certificates, you write interpretations of the code, this use is allowed, this use isn't. You're allowed this certain setback on this property for these rules, for these reasons. And then it does include zoning enforcement actions. So then when we, there's an identification of a zoning enforcement, we review it, we make sure that it is proper, it does correlate to our code. It's clear, it's obvious, it's defensible in municipal court, and then we write and cite on those violations.
Thank you, and I'll say it again, we're lucky to have you and your staff, you guys do a great job.
Appreciate that.
Thank you for all you do for the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just another question on that, do we have any kind of system that logs or tracks, you know, zoning violations? Or even, I guess, you know, building stuff like that, just to get a sense of reoccurring issues or, you know, anything like that outside of, you know, your internal tracking in your office?
We'd certainly maintain all the files and the files are organized in a way where, you know, we can see what properties might have had multiple instances over time. If you're, you know, I don't think I can, and I think we do have logs on that, but it's not as if there's an online database where someone can go and say, I'd like to see all the zoning violations over the course of history. And sometimes, I mean, these, these, these files are considered public information. If someone has a zoning violation, that becomes a public document. But at the end of the day, the, the system for organizing it, it's, it's basically physical files, file cabinet, and then digital files organize that way. You know, I wouldn't describe it as there's like, you know, you could go on the web and you could see a master list. If someone asked me for a master list, we would say, no, but you're welcome to come into the office and go examine every file you'd like.
Any benefit to, to doing anything different with that system? Any of the, you know, municipalities do things like that? You don't even have to answer it now, maybe just something to consider for, you know, budget discussion, stuff like that. And and I keep comparing it to the work order system thing, I know it's different worlds, but, you know, even for your own purposes. But it's just something to think about, food for thought. Councilwoman Capaldi?
So, talk to me, talk to me like I'm five. I have a neighbor, I live in a residential neighborhood. I have a house. I have a neighbor that is, I could tell was running a business out of it, and I know that's not supposed to happen. I think I've even called you because of somebody using, somebody I know wanted to use their house as a music school. And it was a great conversation, you guided us in the way that, and I guided that, that resident in the way that they could do that. So what do I do as a resident if they're doing something they shouldn't? There's a business that's happening there and they shouldn't be doing it. What do I do? What does, what does a resident do when that happens? What do I do? What does, what does a resident do when that happens?
You file a complaint, you, you, you report it to me and then the town will investigate it and will determine based on what we can observe. If there does appear to be a violation happening on the ground. And if there is, and there's evidence of that, then we move forward with the process. If there isn't, then we communicate back to the complainant. If it's not anonymous, if they provided their information and there's a line of communications still open, we communicate back. We did not observe evidence of a violation.
So basically there has to be evidence, you see the evidence and, um, pretty, it seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah. And I think a key thing in any given property, it's the evidence has to be observable activities on, on the property. It's not, it's not about someone listed something on Facebook or somebody listed an address somewhere that indicates you could mail a check to my business, mail it to this address, however they register their address on various state sites or whatever. It's about what's the activity that can be observed happening on the ground. Here's a good example, like someone could say, you know what, I like to sell products on eBay. That's what I do. You know, I, I might buy something at an antique shop. I think it has better value. I take pictures of it. I sell it online. So far, someone might argue that's a business. I mean, it's the activity that's happening on the site. If that person has multiple customers coming in and out of the door, I'm going to say, I'm observing someone treating this like a retail operation. There's a point of sale. This is now a retail operation that is not allowed. If it's basically every week a package goes back and forth, the operation on the ground is not observable operation of retail. So we live in an interesting world where, you know, there's so much that can happen digitally. So really what we observe is, is what's happening on the ground. If someone's got customers coming back and forth, then we have a point of sale on the site. We're going to say, there's not enough parking for that. This wasn't built for those level of customers.
What about if I owned a, um, you know, I have an LLC, it's got my home address and I own a, um, landscaping business and I park the trucks at my house. There's no activity going trucks, my truck. There's no activity going on at that property. It helps, happens elsewhere. Is that okay?
I don't think that that's a violation. I have to, I, we, it might depend on the, the size of the vehicle. That might be something like you're allowed to residential zones and you're going to have to excuse me, some of this code I'm not intimately familiar with.
Of course.
That could relate to the sizing of a vehicle, certain tonnage of vehicles aren't supposed to be parked in residential zones. But you know, yeah, people are allowed to bring a vehicle that they've done work into their residence and park it in their residential property. That, there, there's certainly allowances for that.
But if it was a question, you'd follow the procedure you kind of outlined before.
You know, hey, this parking, this person's parking vehicles illegally on their property. We would respond to it. We'd review the applicable code. If we find that the vehicles are being parked illegally or used illegally on the site, then we would cite, we'd move forward with, with the process.
I checked out someone who.
Thank you for your easy to understand explanation. One of the questions that I have, is your department more reactive than proactive?
For sure. Unfortunately, to have a proactive zoning enforcement measure, which I don't think is very common in the state, it would be a significant staffing undertaking and we, you know, we probably would have nothing but violations. You'd probably see every business in town get a violation for signage of some type. That is not to say that these things couldn't or shouldn't happen, but it is a function of staffing and what we can do. And we do work hard to keep up with the reactive approach. So this is a system that is meant to be, if, if we hear somebody with an issue, we react to it. But we don't have someone that's driving the streets on a daily basis looking for issues.
That was my, that was my next follow-up. Do you have anyone that drives through these particular areas? As you know, I represent District Three. You know, I, I think of a, the street like Boston Street, you know, there's houses on there that have got, you know, an exaggeration, maybe 15 cars to a house. They're lined all up and down the street. You can't see over the hills. People fly 100 miles an hour. There's three bus stops on that street. And I, and I just think like, we have ordinances. So basically what you're asking is, you know, I should be contacting you that Boston Street is an issue and we should see if these cars are registered. There's got to be ordinances that they have to have plates on their vehicles. You know, like it, you can't even turn onto Boston Street sometimes. We have kids walking, you know, so it's, I think of, but obviously it's a staffing issue. You can't drive around all day long and.
Those would be police issues too, councilman.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, that's one of those.
Left wheels to curb.
I don't know if anyone has been up and down Boston Street, but it, it is, it's, it's, it's a nightmare and it's a, it's a safety hazard. Truthfully, I've had a couple of constituents reach out to me. You can't see going over the hill. We have a house on the left, a house on the right. They both park on the street and here's the hill. So at night it's easy, you can see headlights coming, but during the day, you can't see that bus stop on the other side. And then they fly down, you know, past Club Jokes and that whole street is like a, it, it is, it is, it's tough. I think one of the points that I want to make, and this has nothing to do with you there, sometimes we get emails and they're asking us and you're included on some of those emails, some of the council, all of the council people are in. We need to be very careful that we're not providing legal advice. I think that there is sometimes asking for recommendations on what to do. And I, and I think we have to be very careful there, that it's not, the burden is not on the town. You know, the, the burden is on the complainant, not the, not the plaintiff there, or the defendant, we should, we should say. So that's a fine line between wanting to solve an issue, but without giving actual legal advice and maybe how it should be done.
Yeah. And I, and I can tell you, I, I'm not in a position to give legal advice. I do try to at least help people when I think there's, you know, something someone needs to understand about process. And they won't understand what's the next step in the process? How does this process work? I think that I try to, you know, give people an idea on process. In terms of ultimate determinations, that's, that's hard to do. But you do try to help people that seemingly want information that helps them at least take the next step in their understanding. But I try to avoid giving anything that is conclusive, especially without any evidence.
And I say that just as a caution for, you know, because we don't see if anyone else responds, right? So what I would ask you for my own benefit is if you do respond to constituents or to town people, just include us on. You know, because my fear is like, oh shoot, someone's going to respond to this and get us in a lawsuit. Like somebody's going to respond to this recommendation, asking for legal advice and we're going to be jammed. So when it's someone like the town manager or the planning or the, you know, our solicitor responds, I would ask that you just hit for spot, apply all. So we know like, hey, someone's already handled this or said it.
Yeah, that's usually my style. I mean, there, that's not to say that I respond to every email that we get. Sometimes the email, it, it's not, it doesn't necessarily rise to the level of a, this is a zoning issue, someone asked a specific question, they're looking for information. But generally if you get an email and I respond, I'm typically responding to everyone. I think it's, the council was part of the beginning of the conversation. I think that they should see the full duration of the conversation.
Councilwoman.
And I will say, as my colleagues have, you, you do a great job and you've always been, just personally, when I've had questions coming, coming, coming up in the ranks, I don't know, in the months that I've been here, you've always been very straightforward and understanding. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Have you ever, in your role, have you ever known a resident to be breaking a zone? But you can't prove it?
That, I mean, that, that's an, an interesting question. That's inherently, if I can't prove it, then I can't say I know they're breaking.
Well, you say you have to observe it with your eyes of something happening.
Correct.
So just wondering if you have ever felt that scene, thought that there is something going. So if you don't see it, it's end of story. It doesn't, doesn't.
I think, I mean, there's, there's all kinds of gray. There's situations that require perhaps multiple site visits, multiple observations, deep consideration of the issues at hand. There's some situations that require a singular site visit, a singular observation. I can't, I can only tell you that, I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's not an easy job, but in, in zoning, there has to be a black and white. Either you've determined there's a violation or you've determined that there isn't. And, but we live in a world of, you know, lots of gray in between. I try to use as my guidepost is that, you know, I'm, I'm not here to make wildly, uh, I don't know, complex interpretations. I try to take a very straightforward approach. I see what the code says. I tried to ensure that I feel like there's clear evidence that if this is what the code says and there's clear evidence, there's a violation. I have in mind, what would the municipal court judge do if this found its way to them? Would they agree that there's clear evidence and that the evidence is there and that the observations were clear and simple? And I, and I try to move it that way. I also think anytime we have a zoning violation, the first goal is to get compliance. So the first goal is if there's a clear observation and there's a clear violation, we want to give a path towards, here's how you correct it. Because, you know, that's the most important thing, giving people an opportunity to correct. Most of the times we have a violation, someone didn't know they were violating the code. And they're, they're learning about it for the first time. Oftentimes they come back with a lot of confusion or immediate apologetic, let me do whatever I can, or scrambling for, I can't do that in this amount of time. Can you work with me? We work with those people. Every once in a while you get someone that says, I, I don't agree with you and you can appeal it and there's paths for people to appeal it. And sometimes we have people that say, sorry, I'm doing what I'm doing. And then we elevate the enforcement up the chain.
Do you, um, in your expertise, do you think the codes can be interpreted differently by different people?
Sure. Yeah, I think that that's, that's fair. I think that the codes can be interpreted differently and I, you try to take a neutral approach, right? Not bring a ton of your own personality, not bring a ton of your own personal issues to it. You try to be smart and you try to make sure that you're being fair and you try to make sure that you're, you're working within very clear lines that you see. But yeah, you would hope that, that the zoning is written the same way. 10 different zoning enforcement officers would reach similar conclusions, but it's possible 10 different zoning enforcement officers might reach, nine reached one conclusion and one reached a different. It's possible.
The reason why I wanted you here tonight is so citizens could hear how it works, what happens. And I think, thank you for that.
Sure. Happy to.
All right. I got one more for you. One thing that's coming up, that's come up in other areas of zoning. Comprehensive plan for the town, a quick update on that might also be helpful for our.
Yeah, so I'll begin by saying the comprehensive plan is an important document to our zoning code and that's why there's a clear nexus to talk about the comprehensive plan tonight. I think the, the comprehensive plan, we were able just to get some money. I know that this council's probably been thinking for a long while, this thing must be on the 99 yard line. When I came into the position about two and a half years ago, that was the thought as well. About two years ago, we went to, we got comments back from the state. The document does go to a state, statewide planning. They give us comments, the plan does need to meet their approval as well as it needs to meet the local council approval. But we go to them first to say, if we're heading in the wrong direction, if there's something we haven't done, we want to know, we want to get your comments back before we go through a local process. The comments back were that your affordable housing plan and in your housing element in general was, was not up to snuff. It was not close. Our process or our plan to have, to develop affordable housing was that we should develop affordable, affordable housing plan later. And the state said, no, you need to actually do the real affordable housing strategies. How are you really going to develop it? Put it in this plan. You can't make it a to-do list for later. We started doing the work of building that in at a staff level. Frankly, housing is, I think, one of the most important issues in this town. We're going to see a great amount of housing growth. And I think that we have to really get it right. How we handle affordable housing and how we handle housing in our comp plan can dictate the terms of how we react to applications. So it can have certain effects when we deal with a point of application. So it's not just about we set a goal and we move forward and we want to do good things. It actually tells us a barometer for how we can react to certain applications. Have we made enough progress to perhaps defend ourselves against certain types of applications? I want to get it right. We were able to get some free technical assistance. I wouldn't describe it as a grant. The money doesn't actually flow through the town, but there's a program that we were able to get about 90,000 of free technical assistance to help us with, I think, an important, addressing it in a holistic, full manner, all of the housing issues and how they relate to land use. It also impacts the town's build out analysis, which tells us how many units we should be able to build. I don't think those things were done to the level that they should have been for this kind of community, for this important of a plan. However, I think it's going to take us a solid nine months to a year to get the housing element exactly where we want. And I've been having discussions with Dan about, should we move forward with a local adoption of, of the plan? Cause the housing element is just one element out of many. Should we move forward with local adoption with an open communication? That this is the housing policy framework we think is good, but do we want to wait 12 months until we start a local adoption? Or do we want to start it now with the idea that we're going to adopt the entire plan? But there's going to be a housing element that we'll adopt as a separate item later. I think we do want to get this moving. I do want to get it right, but I don't want to hold up everything because there's one element to get, to do better.
All right. I didn't see who was first, so I'll start at the end. Councilman Pasqua.
Thank you. Yeah, the comp plan's been overdue for a long time. When I came in in 22, it was years past due. It was on the, on the to-do list because I think at that time it was like five years past due. So I would definitely be in favor of, of a local adoption with an amendment for housing later. However, we got to do it because this is, we're way past due on this.
Yeah, I agree.
Councilman Hogg.
My, my concern about a nine month timeline is we need this for RDA. So like RDA can't move.
If you don't mind, so one thing I can address, so the nine month timeline and, or the nine to 12 month timeline is to develop a work product specifically for the housing element. And a few items in connection to that in the land use element. I think what other groups are working on can be done and we can move the entirety of the comp plan forward to capture other things. And then it's just those, those housing elements that is going to be basically, what I would imagine, you get a plan, imagine it has 10 elements in it. One element we just identified to everyone upfront, this is, you know, this element is really, uh, basically going to be rewritten by the time, you know, we get nine months down the road. So keep it in mind, communicate to us about what you see here. If you don't like the policies, let us know. But at, at also there's nine other elements that are generally not going to change in the next nine to 10 months. Let's get those moving. We are.
But can we satisfy the RDA requirement without the housing?
I think so. I can't say to be, I can't claim to be an expert in that.
He looks, Mr. Pearl looks like he's shaking his head, no.
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if a partial completion of a comp plan satisfies RDA.
Cause I think what we're saying here is if it's under the land use element, which is approved, would they let RDA stuff go forward while we wait for the full?
And keep this in mind, when I say there's going to be a housing element that's coming later, the housing element that we've put together over the last two years at a staff level would meet local, or would meet local adoption policies and, and procedures, and it would meet state. I just think it needs to be a lot better. And so let's keep in mind when we adopt this, we're adopting the entirety of the plan and it's not going to be a, a plan that's waiting for another element to be complete and to be adopted. We can adopt the plan. I just want everyone to be aware that when we adopt that plan, I'm expecting a pretty quick rewrite of one element. So we would adopt it, it'd be viable, it'd be legal, it'd be binding. And then we come back and clean up one element. And by cleanup, it's really a pretty big overhaul of one element.
I'm curious to know if, because RDA at the last, you know, the last meeting, they are clearly blaming, they can't move forward because of the comprehensive plan is not in place. So our constituents are mad at us because they're not moving forward with the pond. We can't move forward with the pond because of comprehensive. Now, if it's going to take another nine months, I would ask you to drop everything else you're doing and make that priority number one with all of your staff.
But it's not us the way, so we have a contractor doing that for us. But what Doug's saying now is that we can actually adopt the comp plan that'll satisfy the state, that becomes our comp plan. RDA is probably April and May for their plan anyway. So we can probably have our comp plan done the same time they have their plan done. And then we can just amend it with the housing plan in nine months.
That's correct.
So one more time for me, please.
But I think if we can adopt the current plan as is, like Doug's saying.
Will it satisfy the need for the RDA to move forward?
We'll have a, we'll have a complete our comp plan, correct, that satisfies RDA.
Didn't the state kick it back because there was no housing element?
Correct.
So if the state kicked it back because there's no. So if the state kicked it back because there's no housing element?
Doug's saying is, he thinks it's to the point now where the state will pass it.
But he thinks it could be a lot better, so he's not, he's still keeping the housing element out.
No, no, no.
You're going to add it and amend it?
Yeah, then amend it in nine, in nine months to make it better and stronger.
Yeah. Imagine that the state will take C level work. And I'm not saying I think anyone should do C level work, but imagine that they'll accept C level work. Imagine that I think we got our housing element to a B minus, but I want it to be an A. They'll take the B minus and it'll be passed, but I would like to get it to an A. But I don't want to hold the entire plan up trying to get housing from a B minus to an A. And so I want to get the whole plan moving.
Are you at the B minus now?
Yeah.
So we can submit that?
And I think the only caveat is I know GZA has reached out that they want some things added to the comp plan. So we're working with GZA through RDA to get things added to the comp plan before we bring it to the council. So we can definitely go.
We can actually ask about that at the 12-2 meeting.
Yeah, Mr. Brenner will be there on the second, correct?
Councilman Dowell, did you have one? You good now?
Yeah, I think we already answered it at this point, but it sounds like we can amend the comp plan at any time.
Yeah, you have four times a year to amend the comp plan. Is that what you're going to say, David?
Okay, but we're not locked in for five years, so we're, three months is a, is a pretty short time in government work. So if there's no reason for us, if we're missing things because we don't have a comp plan, because we can't execute against a comp plan, even if it's not perfect, we're losing out on all of those.
And I can't claim to be an expert and I'm not well versed on exactly the RDA's need for the comp plan. The comp plan we have, which is ancient, it's 26 years old. It was dated 1999. It's probably one of the oldest comp plans in the state. However, for local policy purposes, it is considered evergreen. It may have passed the state's experiment, but for local decisions, it's considered evergreen. Now, I don't want to speak to, if RDA feels as though they need amendments or revision to that, I'm sure they've done their work and they're speaking truths about, we need to make sure this comp plan is adopted and it has certain pieces in it. We are waiting for our, I'm sorry, not RDA. We are waiting for GZA to offer us a specific product where they see some important pieces to offer guidance on the comp plan as it relates to some of their work. We're willing to then move the comp plan forward for local adoption. The local adoption also isn't instantaneous. There's a, there was an ad hoc committee that we should assemble for at least one meeting that goes to the planning commission. They make an advisory recommendation and then it goes to the council. Keep in mind, it's a hundred, 300 plus page document. The council is going to say, well, that's great about housing, but you know, I've got a punch list of questions on any number of range of things. So it could even require multiple meetings in front of the council. So I mean, it's not an instantaneous process, even in a world where we're moving forward the quickest way we can.
What are the negatives to pushing through the comp plan because it's been improved? It's been lackluster for 15, 20 years at this point. What are the negatives to putting that through so that it's on the books if the minimum time for amendment is three months? We can continue to make that process better every three months in perpetuity if we wanted to, right? So getting it through and getting it on the books to preserve our ability as a town to action against it, sounds like the best case scenario, unless it's going to open us up to saying, okay, these areas are deficient and that would cause more issues for us. But it doesn't sound like that since it's so antiquated, we're losing out on access to certain provisions at the state and local level.
Yeah, I mean, there is the concept that the state will tell you that if you have an outdated comp plan, it weakens the town's position as it relates to, you know, going for state grants. I haven't seen that in effect, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't update our 26 year old comp plan soon. But I haven't seen in my work, the practical reality where we wanted to get a grant, we didn't get the grant because they said your comp plan's outdated. I mean, if you were to look around the state, there's probably 10 to 20% of communities have an outdated comp plan. That doesn't mean they're left in the cold for all the services and the funding and the resources that the state has to offer. It does weaken sometimes your stance, but that's the, that's where I believe.
I understand the point of what we're saying here. I mean, we could.
I'm not hearing a negative.
Yeah, we could do this forever, but to your point, councilman, it's almost like even if we needed something done by April, we could still submit the comp plan now and another three months would go by and we could update it again. Because it's not just the grants element, it's the ability to use the comp plan as a backstop against other development. But I don't want to get too far off, off the topic here. You know, we've already got you in for quite a bit. It sounds like we could do another agenda just comp plan wise, but I know you know a lot and I know you keep peeking our interest. Yeah, we should probably do this at OTD or somewhere else, but.
For your two minutes.
Yeah, I know, that was really, really quick and nice of you, but.
No, no, I got no problem.
We appreciate it. It's a lot of complicated issues. We want to work together. We want to listen to everybody, but this was very good to clarify a lot of big things and then you saw how interested we are in the comp plan. So we appreciate that very much, Director.
Yeah, Dan and I have had, the town manager and I have had multiple conversations about the priority that that needs, but also making sure we get it right. He's been aware of the steps we've gone through to get it to the B minus stage, the fact that I wanted to get it to A. And the best way to handle a plan that we think is in that, that B category, or maybe it's a B plus category overall, housing is not where I want it. But this is not a plan that we should wait on any longer. However, you know, there's a few pieces of information we're waiting on relative to GZA that, you know, would we'd like to get that. I can't guarantee it's going to be in front of you in three months because I'm waiting on information and we still have pre-meetings before you to go through, but we, Dan and I have spoken.
We can, yeah, we'll talk about that if that makes sense, but.
And this is going to be one of those documents, I could see it handing you a 300 page document and everyone saying, I've got, I've got 20 questions.
Why would you think that? That's crazy talk. All right, thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. All right. Very informative, that was good stuff. Let's see, what do we got next here? We are back on resolutions. We still have a resolution. This one we are, is this a follow up to the one we did the other night, Mr. Solicitor?
I would just ask the council, just to continue this matter to December 2nd. I'm still in negotiations, so I don't know whether or not it's going to be agreed to or amended, if it gets amended in a substantial way, presented to the council on December 2nd.
Make a motion to continue Resolution 2025120 to December 2nd.
Second.
Motion and second discussion. Hearing none, all those in, oh, go ahead, councilman.
Mr. Solicitor, the discussion that you're waiting for is what we discussed last with the date changes and all that. That's what you're working on?
I am.
Thank you. Because don't we also have, we already have a motion on the table to approve that pending those dates?
And if we don't get that, if we don't get what?
It'll be null and void, null and void. Thank you.
All right, all those in favor of tabling this?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries, moving along. We are now, nope, we back on. We got public comment on undocketed items? Anybody in here? Please come on up and state your name and address for the record.
Cheryl Kane, 185 Reed Schoolhouse Road. I'm going to say it again. This ordinance is guidance for business activities in residential zones, period. I don't understand why there's any confusion at all about this document, about this ordinance that's in the town of Coventry. It just seems like we're being dismissed, just like the people on Helen Avenue and they've been fighting since 2016. They even went to court. They had a variance on that property and everything and everyone just let it go by. Those poor people, 20 properties are in hell because of one business. This business that's next to me, we have what, five or six houses that are in hell, but we're just going to dismiss this and just let them keep on doing what they want to do. And the reason why people have not been making written complaints is because of intimidation. I had him screaming at me today, screaming. He said that he was going to, couldn't beat up my 75 year old husband, so he's going to beat up my disabled son instead. Now, this is what the town has done to us. This is what the town's done. The town's doing this to also to Helen Avenue. People are not going to move to Coventry because I'm going to go around and I'm going to take pictures of every one of these illegal customary home occupations. Kerry Kowalski has not walked on my property, no one has come to my property to go on to see what is going on. The only person that was there that saw it was Mr. Perillo, but I guess his eyes didn't see the, what was going on in the business there. They were there, I sent you emails today, they were there today doing their business. I was taking a video and that's when, of course, he flipped out on me and was screaming. And then yes, I did yell to him, I'm taking a video of an illegal customary home occupation. So now, it's like, as I'm saying, you are our representatives. Zoning is supposed to help us too, but basically she just sits in her car and never approaches the property. She just sits out in front of the, in the property, never goes to it. Go ahead.
When you were.
Lisa, oh, sorry, councilwoman, we don't want to do a back and forth, undocketed.
They can't ask her a question?
Particular complaint?
No.
Okay.
What she just said, I had to ask her a question, what she just said. I'm not saying anything about property or violation. All I'm saying is, did you videotape that interaction?
I did, but when he was starting to come at me, I did, I ran, I ran into my house. I did come back out when he was yelling that we were the worst neighbors ever, but he did the same, this person did the same thing in Warwick. I have people that lived on Bethel Street and they've talked to a friend of mine and he was hell there too. So he's just, it's just, he's a repeat. He, every year, he brings the garbage back into the house, the salvage items, the junk from all the different businesses he goes to, he cleans out their yards or whatever. Everything comes back toward the property. He cuts the trees down, the diseased trees, brings the diseased trees back to our prop, back to his property, which is a budding our property. So you know, we just, it doesn't make any sense. I mean, Mr. McLean's mentioning that, yeah, if you have someone coming to your house every day, you have a business. I can just have diseased trees and employees and chainsaws and lock splitters and heavy trucks driving across the property, sinking the ground in. And then of course, now he has to bring in all the crushed leaves to make his ground go back up again. You know, like I said, anyone that goes to that property, anybody that comes to my property, you are all invited anytime, anytime. I've told, said to you that millions of times. You can see everything that's going on from there. You can see it, you can see it. I didn't know what else to say, except just what's happening is you're dismissing us. You're basically dismissing us. And I feel that Kerry Kowalski is the one that is stopping this from it to just end. Because all the people in Coventry that are having these issues, they have all complained to her and none of you have heard it. Zoning hasn't heard it, zoning board hasn't heard it. So there's only one common denominator here. Thank you.
I did call you today, Cheryl, right? We had a conversation on the phone today?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And I did call the police, the police came. I gave them copies of the videos, but of course, like I said, I should have copied when he, I should have kept it on when he was screaming and all that stuff at us. But I just, I ran. I mean, I know he has a gun. So you know, I'm, you know, we're concerned, we're very concerned now because this has been going on for so long that the guy's now losing his mind and it's not because of us. The people all in the neighborhood are complaining, but I'm the only one getting blamed. He received a letter in his mailbox the other day and his girlfriend, wife is on Facebook saying that I sent a letter to them. I don't even know what he's talking about. I, you know, everybody, because the town is making it be that it's just me that's complaining, I'm the one that you see because I don't get intimidated. I've been bullied my whole life. I got curly hair, I'm fat and I wore glasses. You know, you can just keep on going on with me, I don't care. But you know, but when I hear that people on Helen Avenue, those older people, and I just found out, I'm old now. I didn't realize that, but somebody said that the older lady. But when I heard those people on Helen Avenue complaining from, since 2016, a fire went up inside me. I just like, I can't believe that this town is allowing this, for these people to be intimidated and tortured. They pay taxes also. I don't, I don't understand, this is just common sense to me. This is common sense that you have to protect your taxpayers. They live in residential areas, not business areas. You know, so you really, you have to address this before someone gets hurt. I'm not going to get an attorney because we have a nonance right here that protects my rights. It protects all the rights in Coventry of these illegal businesses in their residential areas. I don't know what else to say to you. I have, I mean, I have all documentation here, I've given you documentation over and over again. We are correct. The town's wrong. Mr. McLean is wrong. This, the intent, which I was told by an attorney, that when an ordinance is made or created, it's always the intent. We all know what the intent is here because it's clearly, it's clearly demonstrated exactly what it means. So please, don't let anybody fool you. We know what the truth is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in chambers? Please come on up. Name and address for the record, Mr. Riley.
Steve Riley, 5 Osprey Drive. Come before you're, on innumerable occasions. I've argued that Johnson's Pond is a simple property rights and corporations law matter. And what I'd like to talk about tonight is just that the history behind Johnson's Pond has not seen the light of a courtroom in my understanding. And it all started back in 2020 with a false premise that Johnson's Pond was a wholly private What does that have to do? I've given you megabytes of literature to look at. The point that I'd like to make tonight is, is that Judge, with respect to the condemnation matter that took place back in June of 2024, that Judge Leach issued a decision this past 7 November that had to do with maintaining his control of the, of the matter. Apparently Socia was looking to have it elevated to the federal court. And where I'd like to go with this is just quite simply, what is Judge Leach's understanding of this property matter? And to that, I'd refer you to the June 28th hearing where former Solicitor Angel went before Judge Leach and basically said, good morning, Your Honor. The council has passed a series of resolutions which are part of the court's appendix for application here this morning. The council is resolute in making sure, Your Honor, that there is public access for the broader public, other than just those residents of Johnson's Pond. They're looking to make sure that the public has access and they intend to have a public beach, they intend to have public parking, they intend to have a cabana, boat ramps that are presently not usable boat ramps in that area for broader public recreational use. And to provide that benefit to the public as a whole, not just for the citizens of Coventry, Your Honor, but also on a fee basis for those who may not live in Coventry as a non-resident. So that was Judge Leach rationale, if you will, presentation for going forward with this and that's what I expect that he's looking for. The reason I think it's important is this whole idea of private property, 9:30, September 30th, Socia Holdings went before Judge Leach in this matter to request that it didn't belong in Superior Court, but was now a federal matter. And in that argument, Mr. Kelly, his legal counsel, says they own the lake, this being Socia, they owned all the property rights, none of the landholders had riparian rights. Therefore, they had a, the right to, they were going to grant easements after the lease was over. And I'll go one step further and say, in preparing for the condemnation, I'm sure Judge Leach referred back to the first federal case. where Socia was seeking an inverse condemnation, uh, basically because of DEM, uh, getting involved. And the point there was, the judge there ruled that, I'm going to call it a Chevron deference, where, uh, the administrative arm of government, uh, the DEM, had effectively followed or applied the legislative intent of the laws. So, where we're going with this is, uh, in, uh, that September 30th hearing, uh, I, I found it interesting that uh, Judge Leach made a comment, uh, basically, uh, that it was his job to try to understand the infinite wisdom of the General Assembly. And to that, I say, the General Assembly, uh, has been involved in this since the beginning. I consider the property owners of Johnson's Pond to be on the short end of the stick. Back in the, uh, 1870s, when the, uh, pond was first inundated, and the state allowed the use of these mill dam acts, which allowed, uh, a company to overflow the property. And property owners had one of three choices. They either sell outright, fee simple, they grant flow adjizments, or they get, uh, overrun and, uh, they have to go to the Court of Common Pleas. And so, with that in mind, that was the first time property owners got the short end of the stick. In the 1980s, when, uh, Quidnick Reservoir Company amended their charter, uh, the state went along in approving that amendment, once again, because it still, uh, effectively represented the original charter intent, providing water to downstream, uh, companies that were using it now for hydroelectric power. Finally, the third time that they did it was in 2020. The General Assembly ignored the sale of this property. So, I'd love to see Judge Leach, uh, make sense of, of, of those actions. And I'll finally leave you with this. In this September 30th, uh, hearing, uh, a Ms. Boishman, uh, uh, Bo Shane, I think it is, uh, she was presenting, and she talked about something, uh, as part of the whole condemnation process, referring to unknowns. And I would state that some of the unknowns are the property owners of Johnson's Pond. Uh, 60% of the original property, I've told you this before, were granted, deeded flow adjizments. And that, to me, from what I've read in all these treatises going back, it's a deeded property right that runs with the land. You have to add in now the aspect of the fact that it was a body corporate and politic or quasi-public, which means that it would, had a strict charter purpose, especially back when it was created. Because this was just after the passage of our state constitution. And, uh, how many years had we lived under the King's Charter, uh, after, after the revolution? So, where we're going, uh, I'm hopeful that the RDA will be able to come up with a public use determination that's acceptable to the town body under a townwide voter referendum and not the, uh, TIF district approach. This is the irony that really gets me. I've maintained, I've expressed why the General Assembly has been remiss in their responsibility. But now imagine GZA comes up with a proposed TIF district. That TIF district has to go to the state for approval. And so, I would just ask, as you folks go forward, and I applaud you for your efforts to get to the bottom and put this behind us, that you consider these flow adjizments as a, a key thing that has to get resolved. Because it, if on the outside chance that GZA doesn't come up with something that's acceptable to property owners, they could turn out to be an unknown group, uh, class of people coming forward to seek some sort of an inverse condemnation. So, with that in mind, does anyone have any questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, anyone else in chambers? And I don't see anyone on Zoom. Is that the first time? Okay, everybody has left us. Fantastic. All right. Uh, let's see, we've got, we're on item six now, uh, new manager before the council. Uh, this was something I just wanted to keep on everyone's radar. Uh, time is flying quick here. Before you know it, we're going to be having joint meetings and, and budget season. Uh, this was something that came up in last budget development cycle, uh, where we wanted to just kind of get a general awareness of, uh, have some discussions or some meetings ahead of time. Wanted to kind of propose this, especially for our new folks. Um, you know, how we can at least get some preliminary discussions with the department heads. Might also be nice to have a chance to, to meet some of them. Uh, for those of us who haven't yet, there's still some out there that haven't met. Um, so, this item here was basically to, to make sure everyone's aware that this is what's going on. Uh, maybe get a general sense of a timeframe from the town manager on when these would be good to have. But basically, uh, we just didn't want to, uh, have our first meeting with these folks be in the spring, Councilman.
I think this is a pretty simple approach, actually, because we have a, a budget calendar that we're going to be adopting. And the second, okay, yeah, so, maybe we just plan that, uh, when you, when that calendar states that you're going to be meeting with, um, department heads, maybe like the, the pre, pre-meeting, the pre-council meeting before your date on that, we just meet with department heads, they come up before us or something along those lines. Because it's already going to be prescribed date on the budget calendar.
Yeah, I think that's usually January or February, I believe, is when I meet with department heads.
So, maybe just like the meeting before your meeting,
Yeah.
The next, the prior council meeting, they just come up and say, hey, we're going to propose this to the town manager, this is where we're at, and just kind of, yeah, maybe it'll make your job easier too, because you propose the budget to us, and then we give feedback. It will be probably closer.
Okay.
And, and it'll make the process easier.
Yeah, that's a good point. We don't want to just wait until Dan came in. That's kind of how it did go last year. Dan came in and, you know, all those decisions were in front of us. And then, uh, you know, we had to kind of go backwards a little bit. So I think that was one of the intents of this. Uh, so thank you, Councilman. Did you have something, Councilman Hall?
When, uh, at what point does the finance committee that, is that kicking in?
This is another area.
Ahead of this budget, or?
Um, we can do those whenever. We do have to actually assign our new members to committees. So, um, you know, they would probably be super interested in that. And then, uh, even, uh, even if not, me and you can tackle it.
I just, I, I figured maybe the finance was designed to maybe eliminate some of the-
Yeah, we never really got going to establish anything like that, but I'm open to whatever. I, I think, uh, you know, uh, we could either use it as a way to get preliminary stuff and report to the council or dive deep into something as it's developing as an issue. So, totally open to whatever. Um, and maybe for the next, uh, meeting, we can add that agenda item to, uh, Madam Clerk. Uh, if you could take a note, just to, uh, make appointments for these two folks who don't have enough to do yet. They haven't put in any time, and they're, they're dying for more opportunities to come in. Thank you, though. Good point, uh, Councilman. Uh, so that's, that's really what we had. So we got, kind of got a suggestion, uh, from here. I think Councilman Pasqua makes a lot of sense. Just basically want to just jump ahead, get it in everyone's thought pattern, um, so we're all aware. I think that's really all we had on this one. Good? All right, moving right along. It's time for, uh, executive session. Thank you, Town Manager, who predicted one hour. That was on him. Oh. Uh, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to enter executive session.
Oh, I'm sorry, let me read that first. Yeah, let me read that first.
Go ahead.
Yeah, um, we are entertaining a motion to go into executive session pursuant to RIGL 4246 5A2. Potential litigation regarding invoices between the town of Coventry and David Igliozzi Esquire and John M. Verdecchia Esquire. Do we have a motion?
So moved, make a motion.
We have a second, uh, any discussion? This does require a roll call, so please hang on for one sec.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi? Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Darwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Mars?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
President Verducci?
Yes.
Please?
Make a motion to come out of executive session.
We have a motion and a second? Discussion?
Aye.
We still need a roll call, this is executive session, so please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Pasquale has left, so he, he was not present during executive session.
Yep.
Uh, Councilmember Capaldi? Councilmember Hul?
Yes.
Councilmember Darwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Mars?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
President Verducci?
Yes.
Six in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
All right, well, next, entertain a motion to seal the minutes of executive session. Motion.
A second.
Second, discussion? None. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Capaldi? Councilmember Hul?
Yes.
Councilmember Darwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Mars?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
President Verducci?
Yes.
Six in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
The town council met in executive session, uh, session to discuss potential litigation regarding invoices between town of Coventry and David Igliozzi and John Verdeckia Esquire. No votes were taken. Uh, that is it for that. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, discussion, no. All those in favor? Aye. Ayes have it. Good evening.